Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the October 4th, 2022 Meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And we welcome all those who are in chambers, those that will join us throughout the course of the day, and those that will join us by phone as we get into the morning's agenda. So with that, I want to again welcome all of you and turn to our clerk Florence Evans to read into record some important information. And then after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, do the roll call of establish a quorum. And we do want to note that Supervisor Desmond will be a bit late in arrival this morning, but he will join us throughout the course of the morning. So with that, Florence, I'll turn to you to call the roll, establish a quorum, go ahead and read into record some important information.
Okay. Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 7th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters. And when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium to make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance, or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. And thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Great. Thanks Florence. I know we have some folks in the audience that may not be regular attenders, and so if they wish to speak this morning and want to make sure that you're given an opportunity to speak, if they could see Lydia in the back of the room, we have clerk staff, so we do have a speaker's forum, so if you'd be so kind to fill that out if you want to address the Board on an item that's not on the agenda or on the agenda, you're welcome to do so, and we each give you even three minutes to do that. I just wanted to note that, and you certainly can approach the podium and then fill that out later, but the clerk can assist you with that, and that way I can call upon you as we move into the agenda. So wanted to note that. With that then, if you'd join Supervisor Serna, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we do have a number of speakers signed up, and this is an off-agenda item, so I just would, as a reminder, we're able to certainly hear from folks on items that aren't on the agenda, and we encourage folks to participate in our meetings. However, they're not actionable because they're not on the published agenda, but we do have folks in the audience who, if there are questions and concerns that are brought forward to the Board, certainly we can respond briefly, but we also have the ability certainly to ask folks to assist as a follow-up to some of the comments we may receive on any given item. So with that, I'm going to go to the first off-agenda item, and do we have folks on the phone as well that'll be on the off-agenda?
As of right now, we do not have anyone in queue.
Okay. So we take the folks in chambers first, and if there are folks that call in, we go to them next. So with that, I have Deborah Woolley, and then Deborah will be followed by Celisa Campos, and then Alisa Fernandez. So Deborah?
Good morning, Dawn. Good morning, Patrick.
How are you?
Phil and Sue. And Rich is here in spirit, I'm sure.
Yes.
I just wanted you to know how much I love our county, and how much I love our country and love the people. Today, I'm coming before you. I know I have three minutes, so I'm going to keep it brief, but I'm coming to you as one of the people, the status and jurisdiction of common law. I want to give you notice that I have a grievance, and I wish to seek remedy. The blessings of a free government can only be maintained by a firm adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality, and virtue, and by frequent recurrence to fundamental principles. I'm bringing you the fundamental principle of California Constitution, Article 2, Section 2, 2.5 states, "A voter who casts a vote in an election in accordance with the laws of this state shall have that vote counted." And the Maxims of Law 46B says that the legal form is essential form. Furthermore, the California Constitution states that a United States citizen may vote. Maxims of Law 46C says, "Where form is not observed, annulity of the act in this annulity of the act is inferred or follows." In August, I came before you to let you know that we're not following Article 2, Section 2 of the California Constitution. Today, I bring you proof that the voter registration process does not verify citizenship in any step of the way. I'm attaching a letter that I received from the Department of Motor Vehicles in November of 2021 that emphatically states that they do not request, collect, or store any birthplace information concerning its customers for purposes of voter registration, nor does it transmit such information to the California Secretary of State. Therefore, the Secretary of State does not have the ability to verify citizenship of the votes cast. And are you able to verify citizenship of the voters that are going to be casting votes in this upcoming election, November 2022? And if you're not, who gave you authority to not abide by the California Constitution? I know that's a rhetorical question and that you can't answer me today, but please take notice that I am very aware now of the California Constitution, and I'm very aware that our state is not following our constitution that is a contract with we, the people. And you know, that sets up a precedence where we don't trust anymore. We don't trust our trusted servants. We thought we're leaders, and now we know that we, the people, are your boss. So please let me know how you're going to certify this election in November 2022 if you don't follow the California Constitution. My email is on there. I gave you my notice, and I really request a response in the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. And the clerk did circulate your letter to each of us. Okay. Then next, we have a number of folks that are signed up, and so is it Celisa Campos? And then Alicia, Alisa Fernandez? Good morning.
Hi. My name's Alisa Campos, and I just want to talk about AB 41, and that it's supposed to give power back to the people. Countless lives have been lost, and the community has paid millions in lawsuits. This Board has the opportunity to restore some faith and save lives by demanding the sheriff comply with AB 41, by requiring meaningful public input, demographic reporting, legally enforceable sanctions. I also want to say justice for Jaime Narano.
Thank you, Celisa. Okay. Next, I have Alisa Fernandez, and then she'll be followed by Sean Acosta Narano.
Hi there. Thank you, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to use my three minutes of public comment to hold space and silence for Jaime Narano, who was murdered by the Sacramento Sheriff's Department last week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alisa. Next, we have Sean Acosta Narano, and then followed by Adam Jordan.
My name is Siobhan Acosta Narano. I'm here today because my father was murdered by the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. I'm here today because I'm asking for change. I'm demanding change. I'm demanded, demanding that there be funded for MH First, Mental Health First, AB 41. We need to pass these laws. We can't continue to vote people in office who can't help us. My dad should be here today. My dad was murdered because my mom called and asked for help. The sheriff came, and within 30 seconds, my father was dead. 30 seconds. There was a counselor in front of my mom's house all day, offering services. There's been chaplain calling our phones, offering services. How come my parents weren't met with any of those services? How come that counselor was not there? How come one trigger-happy sheriff officer came and murdered my dad within 30 seconds? We can't speak to him anymore. My dad can't teach me anything else. My dad can't serve his community anymore. All of the elderly people that my dad helped, all of these people in the community, my dad can't help them anymore because one sheriff officer came and murdered my dad. We need change in this community. We can't, we can't keep funding people who are not here for us. We can't keep voting people into office who are not here for us. We need the proper resources, and we need the funding allocated to where it needs to be, to help us, the people, because we are the ones who put people in power. We are the ones who, who elect officials that don't care, that don't look at us here as human beings. My dad's gone. He'll never come home. And we're here having to pick up the pieces. But I'm going to fight, and I'm going to continue to fight, and we need, now, now, we need these programs funded. We need the money allocated to the right resources, because that counselor who sat in front of my mom's house all day when she was not needed, we didn't need her anymore. My dad was dead. My dad died before nine o'clock in the morning, and they had my mom out there all day long. She couldn't get in her house. She needed medication. Her blood sugar was high. She's on countless medications, but we couldn't get into my house because we were criminalized. They acted like we did something, and we didn't do anything. And after, after when my mom got back in her home, she had to clean up all of their mess, all of their mess that they made because they murdered my father in front of my mother in his front yard. I demand change. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. Next, Adam, and then Jocelyn Maria.
Good morning. See, I don't like coming up here and talking to the, talking to the Board because I feel like it's futile, even useless. I've even been in offices of some of these Board members who have told me that they actually believe that people who are having mental health problems should be dealt by mental health professionals without police, and then I see them come in front of the Board and come in front of people and do the political thing, saying there should always be police with mental professionals. See, you can't say one and say the other at the same time and mean both things. Well, see, the thing that, the thing about mental health professionals is I've dealt with people with knives, I've dealt with people with machetes, I've dealt with people with sticks, I've dealt with people with crowbars, I know de-escalation techniques that were taught to me in mental health hospitals, and I know how to speak to people so that, so you do not escalate the situation and have to end up hurting them or killing them. And if somebody is so afraid that they see a man standing on his doorstep with a knife that they have to shoot him down 20 feet away within 30 seconds of talking to him, he shouldn't have the job and be afraid. See, the main plate, the main place that the police are killed at are car accidents. There are more police killed today in car accidents than anything else, not by machetes, not by sticks, not by other people with guns, but by chasing cars and crashing into buildings and other cars, right? So all these, oh, the police are in danger? That is hyperbole. They are more afraid and killing more people because they're in fear of their life, and that is the excuse that they have to murder, murder us at will. Out of the 12,000 people murdered a year by police, the 150 people that are unarmed, well, 80%, 85% of them are having a mental health incident. Yes, this man had a, had a knife on his doorstep. The entire family said he did not charge, he did not jump, he didn't attack nobody, he was standing there, and within 30 seconds, he's dead. No de-escalation techniques were given, no de-escalation techniques were used, nobody just said, hey, man, put, I have said, put the knife down, we'll get you a cocoa, a soda, a blanket. What do you need? What do you need to calm down? Not, you need a bullet, not, I was in fear of my life, now I have a good excuse to kill him and keep my job. And that's, that's the huge thing. And I'll bring it back all the way to Stephon Clark. The cops that killed Stephon Clark, I know that was the city and not the county. They, they got, they got recommendations and medals for killing him. They looked at each other in the recording, are you hit? How can they be hit by somebody who held a phone? This is the mentality of the police. They're so afraid that they'll kill you first, handcuff your dead body, and stand over you while you bleed out. That, that's, that's not even humane. That's letting, they don't even let ambulances onto the person after they handcuffed the person and shot him five times? They're shot five times on the ground, and you handcuff them, and then you ransack the people's home, like this family's home? After you kill their people, you ransack their home and criminalize the person you killed, criminalize the family, and, 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 look, it's, this is why I always feel like I'm, like I see, this is one of the few times that I see the supervisors actually look. Usually I come in here, and you're playing on your phones, or you're shopping on networks, or, but now, now you see families and people, and people like me who don't, I don't even come in here no more because it, like, I've spoken to you more than, I've met you more than one time. I think you're a good guy. I know your story, but does that story help us? No. Because the political animal you are, you're going to say something to me that makes me think is you, you are actually with it and understand statistically that mental health professionals save lives?
Yeah.
Period. And the further you get away from police, the more lives you save. So telling somebody like me, I agree with you, and then telling an entire room full of people that, oh, no, we got to have police. First off, when you have a counselor that's dressed in a bulletproof vest and a police officer with a gun, I'm triggered, and I'm not even the one having the issue. I'm triggered by somebody in a bulletproof vest and a gun coming up to me, telling me that they're a therapist, right? That, like, care, courts, those two words shouldn't go together, right? I see I'm over my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Next, I have Jocelyn.
She did my name.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jocelyn. Next, Eliana Chavaria, and then followed by Marissa Barrera. Good morning.
My name is Eliana Chavaria, and I am the oldest daughter of Jaime Narano. I came here to, to say his name and to also, you know, talk about unconscious bias that we all carry. We carry these biases, and we carry these ideas of people, mostly black and brown, you know, people. We walk into their homes just assuming the worst of them, and that's what was assumed of my, of Jaime. And then my mom was treated like a criminal. Yesterday, somebody came over to the house, and they sat there crying, you know, one of Jaime's many employees, because what he did for the black and brown communities, he gave them jobs. He didn't give them handouts, he gave them jobs. More than 50 families did not have to go on welfare because Jaime gave them jobs. He gave them skills, he gave them trades. And a man came over yesterday, and he said, I never went hungry, and my family never went hungry. Everything I have in my home was because of Jaime, because he gave me that opportunity, he gave me that skill. And he took that away from our community. No time for de-escalation, no time for an assessment, no time to find out who this man really was. You let your unconscious bias pull that trigger. We ask for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Marissa.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Marissa Barrera, and I'm coming here today to uplift the family and stand with them. I also lost my brother to police, not here in Sacramento, but I'm familiar with the get down and everything that happens when law enforcement kills our loved ones, and seeing what they're going through, it's just, it's the common story, it's happened across the country, but here in Sacramento, the sheriffs, I live in that area where they live, and they're, they go around, they harass black and brown young men all the time. I see, I drive by, they smile at me because I'm a mother, and I'm usually with my kids, and I don't smile at them back, I let them know how I feel. Don't look at me, don't smile at me, because I don't like law enforcement at all, because they're getting away with killing our loved ones. So what's going to happen with this family? Most likely, the officer will be cleared, because that's just what happens. 99.9% of officers do not get charged when they kill, even with evidence, physical evidence, witnesses, just like his wife, and they're not being charged. It's across the board, it's not just here in Sacramento. My family will stand our federal trial against the officers that killed my brother from Woodland PD in a couple months here. It's been almost six years. So what's going to happen to this family? Is the officer going to be, the deputy is probably going to be cleared, so I don't want to say that, and I don't want to tell the family that, but that's just what happens. And then the only way that the family might be able to fight back is through the civil process. So what ends up happening? These officers are being cleared for killing our loved ones, even when it's straight-up murder? And then they're paid by the taxpayers' money, they're paid by our money. And then the settlements, our families, I have friends that their loved ones were killed by police, and they're getting settlements, $13 million, $5 million, $4 million. I'm talking about California and across the country. So is that what's going to happen to this family? The only way they're going to be able to fight back is ultimately money, but it's not going to come from the officers, they're not even going to get in trouble, it's not going to come out of their pockets, they're not even going to get fired if we don't fight back and try to help this family. I'm glad that there is community and other people here to support the family, the organizers and stuff, ready to stand up with the family. But families shouldn't have to fight, they should be able to grieve, they should be home, they shouldn't be harassed by sheriffs, the things that they did to this family, throwing the wife to the ground, stealing their property, that is evidence, that's their personal evidence and property that shows what happened to their loved one, those officers, sheriffs, whatever they are, I don't care, they all wear a badge. That's not right. What they're doing to families after they kill them, they harass them, they drive by their houses after they killed their loved one? Like, what the hell is that? These people are supposed to be, well, we know that they don't protect and serve, I think everybody knows that now, that's not their job, that's not their job. That's, that's what everybody is programmed to think, it's real, sheriffs, they need to, why, why are Sacramento sheriffs going into our schools? Why are they being with our children? Why are they even allowed in schools? I have my son homeschool because I don't want him to see no cop, no sheriff. They're over there at social services, they're the ones that are letting people in, that's bullshit. They should not be in there, they, they are harm to our community, and they need to be held responsible. So I hope, I mean, I don't know, I don't really know you guys, I don't like speaking in places like this because I feel like I'm looking at people that don't care, because I've been in other spaces, and people just don't care. So I hope that something can be done for this family, that, I hate to say, SAC sheriffs, they've killed before, and they probably will kill again. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Marissa. Marissa, can I ask you a question? Marissa, I just wanted to ask you a que, could I ask you a question real quick? You said just a moment ago that Mrs. Narano was thrown to the ground, is that what you said?
His wife was thrown to the ground. And his family was taunted after he was killed, and they've been driving by their family's house.
Okay.
They'll share.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Mr. Serna?
I would just note that I see a photograph in the audience, I assume that's Mr. Narano right there.
Jaime Narano.
What I would suggest is if the family desires, you can put that on the white platform there, and it can be shown on the, on the screens, and also to the viewers that are watching.
Right there, guys? Is it right here?
Yeah. White screen there. No, yeah, flat, flat.
Flat.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Sorry. No, actually. There you go. There you go. There you go. Can I see that smile? Yeah.
Next, I have Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco, and then Ms., I think it's B-U-F-K-I-N, or J-K-I-N, so I don't know if you have to pronounce your first name following Mrs. Sacco. Good morning, Corinne. Thank you for your correspondence as well.
Good morning, Board. I'm Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a resident of District 2. I'm a licensed psychologist in independent practice. I serve as the president of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, and I'm an active community mental health advocate. Mental illness affects everyone, directly or indirectly. That is why each year, the first week of October recognizes Mental Illness Awareness Week. I'm, actually, today, NAMI recognizes October 4th as a National Day of Prayer for Mental Illness Recovery and Understanding. So I'm here to help y'all understand that mental illness is not a crime. And yet, another person of color was killed by law enforcement here in our county just last Wednesday while experiencing a mental health crisis. Jaime Narano is not going to get a chance for recovery. This tragedy occurred near Enrico Boulevard and Fruit Ridge Road in South Sacramento, neighborhood I grew up in. A wife called 911 asking for help for her husband. She told the operator that her husband wanted to She told the operator that her husband wanted to kill himself and had a machete. Five minutes later, law enforcement arrived and the first deputy on scene shot Mr. Narano multiple times. He was taken to a local hospital where he was pronounced dead. Just one day before this tragedy occurred, the Sacramento Sheriff's Office presented to this board about their less lethal equipment and extensive de-escalate, de-escalation training. Why wasn't that equipment or training executed in this situation? Why was the Sheriff's Department dispatched to this call instead of the Mobile Crisis Response Team, which pairs a law enforcement officer with a trained behavioral health clinician to respond to emergency calls such as this? It's been over two years since Supervisor Kennedy directed health services staff to propose alternatives to law enforcement responses to quality of life issues that can be better addressed by mental health professionals. And yes, we are standing that program up and yes, that program has been delayed months now and there's been nothing offered in the meantime. And yet we have another death. People with untreated mental illness are 16 times more likely to be killed by law enforcement. Law enforcement's trained to use interventions designed to contain somebody that's perceived as danger. The only person Mr. Narano was a danger to was himself. That's why his wife called 911 asking for help and instead her husband got killed by the very people she called for help. You wouldn't send a soldier to respond to someone in cardiac distress, so why do we keep sending law enforcement to respond to a mental health crisis? Although they've had some training on how to de-escalate confrontations with people experiencing mental illness, this training's really just a workaround for a system that shouldn't be responding to mental health crisis calls in the first place. They rely on their standard procedure for an armed suspect, which is to yell commands and prepare to use deadly force, such as what happened in Mr. Narano's case, which only leads to increased agitation or aggression of the person suffering from a mental health crisis and this prompts law enforcement to open fire. Given the prevalence of mental illness in law enforcement shootings, reducing encounters between law enforcement and individuals with mental illness represents the single most immediate practical strategy for reducing fatal police shootings. This county must immediately contract with a community-based organization that's already providing behavioral health crisis response that's life-affirming and trauma-informed and has the staffing, like MH1st, until that wellness crisis call center response program's ready to go live. In addition, cooperation from law enforcement dispatch in all jurisdictions county-wide must be ensured for proper utilization of that program so no one else is killed for having a mental health crisis. It's unacceptable to allow these fatal outcomes to persist. Jaime Narano deserved better, his family members deserve better, his community deserves better, we cannot wait until another life is lost. Stop killing my patients. Stop sending cops to mental health crisis calls.
Good morning.
Fire the officer, he violated the sheriff's policy and procedure, I mean, bare minimum. Even at MH1st, we know common sense tells you not to respond by yourself. The first thing he should've done if he felt uncomfortable was to call for backup and then wait for that backup. And the fact that he did not do that lets us know that he is at least incompetent. At best, he's a scaredy cat. The least you can do is make sure that this guy does not get a Medal of Valor in six months. Don't, don't let it happen, don't let the sheriff spit on us, on you, in that way by awarding him or giving him a raise or moving him to a different department. It is clear he is incompetent, fire this guy and release his name. The media loves to say all the bad things, right? They, they, first they say, "Oh, the person had a machete," or "When he was 14, he smoked marijuana," or when, write, write these things. Jaime was a pillar of his community, Phil, in your community. Do you hear what I'm saying?
I do.
Gave people jobs, he parented other people's children, he called all the right numbers, did all the right things, and he was murdered by an incompetent officer who did not follow his training. This is not a rarity, can you believe they handcuffed this man in front of his family after they shot him? And it's not unusual. It's their policy to cuff bleeding bodies. Come on, y'all, the lip service ain't gonna do it. There is appreciation for the steps that y'all have taken, but come on now, the bureaucracy is way too deep. It's too thick. This is too much, you know you can do different, Patrick. Fill up. Move it, man, we're tired of seeing our folks die. Because someone is, is racist. Even if, even if they don't say it in that way, but their actions show it. He was in South SAC, he pulled up to a home, he saw a brown man and shot him first. 30 seconds? Come on, man, I know y'all feel that. His whole family is here to plead, don't let the Sheriff's Department shit on the work that you've done, don't let them shit on his family, don't let them shit on the community, Mr. Barnes, Scott, whoever's sitting in that seat right now, don't do it. No justice, no peace, and we mean that.
Okay, next Courtney Hansen, followed by Paul Andrews. Courtney.
Morning, Courtney.
Hey, everyone, good morning. I really am just sitting with the loss today. For this whole family, for this whole community, and we needed, we needed 24/7, community-based, no cops, mental health services yesterday. We needed it for Wallace Jewelry, we needed it for Adrian Ledd, we needed it for Michael McIntyre, we needed it for Jesse Adaway, we needed it for Chad Irwin, we needed it for Maurice Angel Hawley, and we needed it for Jaime Narano. And I think sometimes, people in these seats, your seats, you either get complicit and comfortable or you truly forget the power that you hold. I have seen you do the right thing with a stroke of a pen. So reflect on any barriers that might be keeping you from doing that. We cannot lose another community member to this violence. These are the same sheriff's deputies, if this board decides to move forward with a new mental health jail that will be running things in that building. We do not trust the Sheriff's Department to help our community. And Ann Edwards, you too have a lot of power. We have an elected body and we have an executive body that holds a lot of power and gives a lot of direction to this board in terms of what they should be doing and ultimately you control the budget. We need investments in care, not cages, not cops. Please, do not let us lose another person to this. It is generational trauma that's being created.
Good morning, Paul, and then following Paul will be Cardi Brennan.
Last Wednesday, your lack of an alternative to 911 killed a father. Your lack of an alternative killed a grandfather. Your lack of an alternative killed a husband. It's been over a year since the beginning of the discussion about an alternative and we have had nothing in the interim. Every advocate knew that every day carried with it the potential for taking lives. And here we are after the la, that lack of urgency, this was a direct result of your decision to sho, to slow-walk such an alternative. The deputy says that Jaime advanced on him, then released the body cam footage for proof. Explain why their security footage was stolen and return it intact. Until then, he's only just another in a string of lying cops lying to protect their jobs. The reality, the reality is, is that until we hold killer cops responsible for the lives they take, this will continue to happen in multiple instances, including outside of the mental health room. And if they don't fear repercussions for a bad decision and view the slightest of threats as always deserving of deadly force, and all that combined with an utter lack of concern or care or sense of humanity for brown and black people, then you will continue to see them killed unnecessarily. Jaime didn't deserve this. Jaime deserved concern and care and someone who could talk him down. Not someone who despite being trained in de-escalation tactics only seemed to know how to escalate. And when a lack of de-escalation isn't punished and there is no motivation for them to ever de-escalate, this happens. Many of us have been where Jaime was. We have been there with suicidal thoughts, scaring ourselves with those thoughts. What good is it to have a police force that is no good to call in emergencies? What good is it to have a police force that, as we saw a few days ago, has just as much of a chance of killing an innocent hostage in Southern California as it does of catching a criminal? The system is broken, which is not surprising since it started out broken. It has been grandfathered in for far too long, lacking any metrics to prove any level of, 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 of efficacy. Lacking any checks to ensure police are held accountable when they violate people's rights. Hold police accountable, release the body cam footage, release the security footage, get alternatives to 911 in place as fast as possible, even a partial response would be preferable to this. More delay will only result in more death, more pain, more suffering. And performative motions don't get us far enough. We need actual action, policy change and urgency.
Good morning, Cardi.
Jaime Narano is a father, a grandfather, an uncle, a godfather, a hero to many, as you've heard from his loved ones in here today. Why was shooting the first option? He was standing there saying, "I'm tired, I need help." Those were the words that were coming out of his mouth as that bullet left that gun toward him. He was asking for help. I have been in situations, I am not a mental health professional, I am a normal human being, I have been in situations with people experiencing a mental health crisis with a weapon in their hand. And I was fine, you know why? Because I treated that person like the human being that they are. I gave them water because it was hot and that calmed them down and they put away their weapon and were able to have a conversation. And that was somebody who was deep in psychosis. This is a man who was tired and needed help. This has to stop. So I'm gonna uplift the, the demands here. We need the body cam footage released. And it needs to not have cartoons, it needs to not be narrated, it needs to not have all that BS editing that SAC sheriff has so commonly done with their releases. We need the, um, personal security footage returned. Was, was it taken or was it deleted? It was deleted. It was deleted, the officer deleted their personal security camera footage, which clearly indicates that that officer knew that he was wrong. It's criminal. Tampering with evidence. Release the name of this murderer, release the name, fire him, and when SB2 goes into effect next year, he can be stripped of any certifications because he should not be on our streets. And we need you to fund and actively work on a 24-hour non-police crisis response. I do it now, every Friday, Saturday and Sunday night. MH1st is open from 7:00 PM until 7:00 AM. You can call us, you can text us, you can message us on social medias. Call us instead of the cops because we will meet you with care, not bullets. I, I can't believe that this continues to happen and that nothing has happened. You, you guys don't do anything to fix this, everything seems like platitudes at this point. The family needs justice and the community needs an actual resource now.
Okay, next I have, I think it's Raul Lerma and then Moise and then Mackenzie.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Raul Lerma, I am a civil engineer. I've worked with Caltrans and I grew up here in Sacramento. I have been depressed for a long time. I've had thoughts that would lead somebody to think that I was a danger to myself. Not once did I ever think or feel like I should be killed for being depressed. In a society like this where capitalism is so fraught, where people protect material goods over lives, where cops are here to ensure that people's property don't get damaged and kill innocent civilians in trying to do something. This isn't right. We have the ability now to try to imagine a future that we would want to live in. It seems so obvious to have separate systems, one for dangerous threats and one for people who are having a bad day, who are depressed, who are in need of help, in need of compassion. Please do all that you can to move forward with progress towards helping those with mental health crises instead of sending agitated murderers to their doors. I've emailed each of you on separate topics like the militarization of our police, which I hope just seems ridiculous, especially after an event like this. As well as Measure O, criminalizing homelessness. When people go through terrible things, it takes a toll on their mental health. And with everything that Sacramento is going through currently, it's not surprising that we have a mental health crisis. These people are your constituents, they are your community members and they are your loved ones. Your wacky nephew, who's an artist and a civil engineer, they have bad times and they need appropriate help not to be shot. Please hear us, please hear the voices of all your community members and please do what's right. Release the body cam footage of that murderer. Give the footage back to the family. Set up a 24/7 mental health crisis hotline and system to help those in need. Thank you. Release the name of the sheriff who did this. Thank you.
Thank you, Raul. Good morning, Moise.
Good morning. I would have questions for my county supervisor with his background and expertise in the field of law enforcement, but I see that he's not present today. So instead I just ask all of you, could you take a breath with me? This is hard being here. Can we just take a minute to take a breath? That breath that we all have is sacred. That breath that we all have is sacred, is our life and it was stolen last week. I'm here in support of the Naranjo family and their demands. One week ago today, in this, in this building, in this, in this meeting, a threat was made by your sheriff's department that if their military equipment use policy was not supported, that they will have to rely on lethal rounds. Within 24 hours, they made true and acted on that threat by killing Jaime Naranjo. They reacted to a literal call for help with a gun, with a bullet, with a murder. I'm just going to reiterate the demands. One, release unedited, unedited body camera footage. Two, return any footage if it was not already destroyed that was taken from the Naranjo family. Three, release the name of the officer who killed Jaime Naranjo. Decertify and fire him. He does not belong in civil service. And four, fund a 24/7 non-police emergency response for mental health calls immediately that mirrors the excellent work of MH First and the Anti-Policeman Project Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Moise. If I'll Mackenzie, it'll be Eric and Naranjo and then Barry Axios. Axios, excuse me. Axios, Barry Axios. Okay.
At best, ooh y'all, at best you would have to, mm, at best this would have to be a lack of understanding of the severity, harm, death and pain because otherwise you have, you would have more intention and urgency and the much-needed changes. Y'all are running out of excuses in your complicity because now it is becoming very apparent that you might not actually care. Hello Board, my name is Mackenzie Wilson and I am a community organizer for Decarcerate Sacramento. I normally start my statement with you all with a good morning or a good day, but today is not a good one. And that, mm, and today we are here because another life has been lost in this community due to police violence. His name is Jaime Naranjo, husband, father, community member and hero for many. The truth is this loss, like many, could have and should have been avoided. Social change lesson. For years, the crisis, the cries of many have demanded across this country for the removal of law enforcement from mental health calls. Not just because you can't get well in a cell, but because their training and culture across this country results in the death of unarmed people, people of color, people experiencing crisis, whether that's mental health, substance use or homelessness every single day. Again, this speaks to the culture and training of law enforcement. When their role is only our criminalization and our forced compliance, this is why they cannot de-escalate. Care is not a part of that job description when dealing with things like mental health, substance use crisis, homelessness and all of the other things not in their purview, yet still a part of their services and budget. Today could have been avoided in many ways, not just because you have been having family members and community experts in here for years, you, but today you are complicit because you have not made the investment, the vital reinvestment that this community has been telling you to give us for years. Decarcerate Sacramento specifically has been doing that, telling you to stop any and all jail expansions, reduce your jail populations and make vital reinvestments in the community care, housing, food access, education, mental health, substance use services that are vital to the, to why even a cop would have never had to show up to that house in the first place. That family would have been able to call help, not a gun. Not only do we need, and I'm about to maybe repeat that, not only do we need vital reinvestment and care not cages, but we must make services that prioritize the whole person and the social determinants of health, you know, care, what is, like, care about what's offered instead, you know, access to support and services that are, that center care would have prevented this call in the first place. Access to services and support that centers care first would have that real co, or real help, not that gun, yo. Like the sad truth is that this is happening inside and outside of our jails. Sheriff deputies that respond to mental health crisis with deadly force in this community are the same sheriffs inside the jails because they are transferred in and out every couple of months. The sheriff has no place in mental health care, whether that is community or the new mental health jail that this county is thinking about building. No building or service facilitated by the sheriff is rooted in mental wellness. It is ruid, rooted in our criminalization and in our forced compliance. It isn't in their fucking job description. Give this family and this community what is being demanded. Release the footage and the officer's name. Remove SAC Sheriff from mental health services and that means fund 24/7 non-police emergency responses and neighborhood centers that people can walk into. And do not build your mental health jail that you are considering. And as always, from this community, we are going to repeat ourselves. Invest in us. Give us our services, our care, our support. Build and foster communities that are healthier, fed, educated and therefore safer and freer and no longer tied up in your system that has a jail and cops that are used to treat our trauma, our crisis, our poverty, our survival crime. And that's at best, y'all. Right now, at worst, we're killed by your law enforcement. You have no more excuses. The time is now and you have to invest in our futures today, yesterday, the weird, the years before, now. Thank you.
Next, Eric.
I'm gonna turn around and face all of you guys. Um, I'm, I lost the words. I am Jaime Naranjo's youngest daughter, his baby girl. I want everybody to remember him for the great man he is. And it kills me that everybody knows the name of my dad. Everybody knows the name of my dad and they know what his face looks like. Look at that smile. Look at him, look at how beautiful he was, inside and out, no doubt, inside and out, the best human being in the whole wide world. But do we know the name of the bastard that shot him down? Like animal? Do we know what his face looks like? No, we don't. But everybody sees my dad on the news as this criminal that had a machete. My dad wasn't a criminal. My dad was my best friend. My hero. I don't know what to do without my dad. I don't know what's gonna happen when I'm stranded on this side of the road. Cause that's who I would call. My daddy. He needed help. But you know, I have faith that something beautiful is gonna come out of this because that's what my dad did. Made everything beautiful. So we're not gonna let his murder, because that's what it was, murder. We're not gonna just let it go. We're not gonna just sweep it under like it was nothing, that he was just another brown Mexican nobody, just another gardener. No, that wasn't my dad. My dad helped everybody. He was everybody's dad, everybody's gunpowder, everybody's steal. You could ask my dad for help, he wouldn't ask for anything in return. That was just his soul. That was just him. But like I said, something beautiful is gonna come out of this and if it took for my dad to be murdered, for someone else's dad, someone else's hero not to be murdered, thanks dad, you're still helping. My mom is in pieces, my family is broken and I can't pick it up. I can't pick it up without my dad. I've lost, guys. My heart is torn. My poor big sister, my sister Siobhan, she's handling it. She's strong. Cause you know who taught her to be like that?
My dad.
My dad. Thank you guys all for coming out. Don't let this false narrative on the media make you think that my dad was just a fucking animal, cause he wasn't an animal. He was my hero. My hero. I could tell you countless, countless things that my daddy taught me. Like I said before, I could gut the hell out of a fish. Cause my dad said, "You wanna go fishing? I ain't gonna do that for you. You're gonna do it by yourself. I'm tired of baiting your hook. You gotta learn how to bait your hook." And we would use sardines and our hands would smell like ass, but that was the best, the best bait, you know? I remember going right after fishing, we would go to McDonald's and my dad would hate having his Big Mac because his hands smell like fish. And I'm gonna keep those memories alive. I'm gonna keep every beautiful thing that he taught me alive. I'm gonna teach my three children and my stepchildren and my grandchildren all the things my dad taught us. Come here, baby. You guys see this picture right here in the top left corner? If you notice the date, it's 6/8/2012. You see how happy he is? You know whose birthday that was? You know who was born that morning? And this one right here is grandpa's girl. Anything grandpa did, behind him. Helping. Because that's who my dad taught her to be. I shouldn't be here. I really shouldn't. I should be at home telling my dad, "I love you pa. We're gonna get through this pa." But I can't. I feel sick to my stomach. I wake up every morning thinking that, hey, that was a fucking fucked up joke, nightmare. But it's my reality. It's the reality of my sisters. It's the reality of the kids. And the worst part, it's the reality of my mom. We don't know that bastard cop's name. I don't even know what his face looks like. But I hope every time he closes my eyes, he sees that smile. And I hope that one day, we will get justice for my dad. And I pray no one ever has to lose such an important person. Cause my dad was the best person. And I don't care if I'm out of time. I'm gonna keep talking and keep talking and keep talking because I want you all to know who my dad was. He was a hero. My hero. He was a hero to many kids in the neighborhood that didn't have fathers because that was my dad. My dad wanted to make sure everybody loved. My dad wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance. Cause my dad came from nothing and made something beautiful. And like I said, this may be an ugly situation, fucked up situation. But my dad left everything beautiful. You go anywhere in Sacramento, I guarantee you, my dad had something to do with that. You go to our house and it was dirt and it's a green lush garden. I have faith that my dad is in heaven and maybe that's why God took him. No, God didn't take my dad. I, I take that back. This unnamed officer that we don't know who he is, this faceless officer that we don't know who he is, he took my dad. But I have faith that my dad is in heaven and he's tending to God's gardens. And when I get there dad, you're gonna show me everything you planted and we're gonna work on God's garden together. I miss him so much. I have a hole in my heart, an emptiness in my soul. I can't call my dad anymore for help. But he called for help, guys, and he was met with violence, met with bullshit. And my dad will get justice. It might not be today, it might not be tomorrow, it might be in a few years. But my dad will get justice. If we have to crawl on our knees till they bleed, if we have to fight till our knuckles are bleeding, Jaime Naranjo, my daddy, my hero, he's gonna get justice. He will. And he's gonna leave a beautiful mark on everybody. So I demand that we find out who this bitch ass cop is. This coward cop. He was scared, scared of a man who was so frail with a machete, a fucking machete. My dad was so weak that he could have just slapped it out of his hand, but no, emptied a fucking clip in my dad's chest. So thank you all for coming. I love you dad. Remember that face? Remember who he was off his fake ass narrative that the media is trying to make my dad seem like? Remember he was a hero to many, a father to many, a thief to many? I bet you if any of y'all met him, he would have been gladly to help. If anybody, he was the type of person that if you were stuck on the side of the freeway, hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna stop what I'm gonna do and I'm gonna go stop and see what this person needs. Dad, who knows, that might be a killer. They need help. I'm gonna help. That's what my dad taught us, to help when you can. And I'm gonna carry my dad's memory alive. And I also want to mention, the day of everything happened, I asked the cops, "Can I please just sit on that side, there's shade right there? Please, I wanna make sure no one goes into my house unlawfully." We weren't showing a warrant when they destroyed my mom's house, nothing. But as I sat there and I was told, no, I couldn't look at my house, watch my house, and they told me I had to go across the tape, as I walked away, those five motherfuckers that were there. Feel my anger, feel it. Feel my anger, feel my hurt. Those five cops that were there, as I was walking away and they told me I couldn't sit on the yellow side, they played a ringtone, womp, 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 as I walked away. Let's, let's, let's just, let's just add salt to the wound. But it's, he's just a Mexican man, right? He's nobody. He was everything for me, everything for me. So any fathers out here, are you guys fathers? Are you guys dads? You guys have little girls? Make sure you love on them. Make sure you love on them in honor of my daddy. Cause he can't love on me. He can't love on Joss. He can't love on my mom. He can't love on my sister. He can't love on my sister. He can't love on Heather.
Okay. Barry, you're next up. Barry's the last one I've signed up to speak on this side. We may have, do we have some folks on the phone? Hello?
We do.
We do, okay, good. All right, Barry, go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
Board. As you guys are hearing raw emotion from the family members, the community. And when you guys all looked at the granddaughter, one of 12, for those who have grandchildren or children, this is the type of stain that police killings in our black and brown community leaves. Individuals in mourning, frustrated, angry, because they are trying to process what gave this deputy the right to kill their hero, their champion, their papa, their Jaime, in his own home when he was asking for help. We have a serious problem with mental health and with the last two years, I'm not quite sure how any of us are saying all the things that we've had to go through. And when I, when I think about this community of Sacramento and I think about all of the performative measures after George Floyd and the thoughts and the theories of everyone's talking like, "We're gonna change some things and things are gonna look a little bit different." People were kneeling, people were posing, people were saying everything right. Everything was wrong because you still didn't get it. You were acting as if we were complaining about something that you did not do, that your systems of white supremacy did not hail on black and brown communities. Cause this is all rooted in that. And Mr. Serner, if I'm correct, Jaime is in your district, right? I guarantee this man voted for you. Guarantee you. And I'm gonna ask you, cause you are a man of honor and respect, I've seen the good work that you've done in many communities, not only in your district but outside the district. Have you called the family? Have you given your condolences to the family when you heard the news? Have you reached out to the family, said to the family that you're going to do whatever you possibly can as a father? As, as a man who has a father- As, as a man who has a father who left you a great legacy? To make sure that their father's legacy means something? And if you haven't, that is also a part of the problem. See, the bigger issue is just not Jaime. The bigger issue is why in the hell do we pay sheriff or any kind of law enforcement, the dollars that we pay from our own taxes, to come to a mental health crisis and just think and murder someone without question? No de-escalation, no taser, just a gun and guns him down in his own home. A home he had for 30-plus years. There has to be some type of compassion. And if it doesn't come from our own Sacramento County District Board, who does it come from? You cannot continue to allow the sheriff to punk you guys into submission as if they are the bosses and you're not. Because we know that we're not the bosses because we're right here saying again, please don't shoot our future down. Please don't shoot a hero down. Please don't shoot a husband down, a grandpa down, a pillar of the community down. We need to make these changes and execute them immediately. Because there's better response and alternatives besides death. I need you to hear me supervisors, especially you Phil, who has been a champion for our community. You need to wrap your arms around this family and champion for them. Because I know in jobs, if we make a mistake, you get what?
Fired.
You get what?
Fired.
You get what?
Fired.
So if the officer made a mistake, he should be fired. That's all I'm saying.
Not transferred to another district.
For all the people in the stands, just think. Just think. Where's baby girl? Come here, baby. Come here, come here, come. This is the same. Imagine it was you. That had your baby. Then I fed it to her, so. No, I need everyone to be there. You start too. Right here. Look at her.
The sheriff's cop is over there.
Where is he at?
Where's that other girl?
Here's your hat, Sheriff Captain. Here's your hat, Sheriff Captain. Come on, Dan.
Nolly, come on.
Show your cap. Come on.
Sheriff. This is what I'm saying. She doesn't have an answer. What she doing? All the question, why the officer felt like that? It wasn't necessary, isn't that what? That's all we're asking. Why was it necessary? Why was it necessary to take a husband and a grandpa away from this poor child? Who doesn't know how to process what you guys may say was correct? Was a part of the rules of engagement with mental health? This is a grandpa who asked grandpa for money to get him. And one of your deputies failed to help her grandpa. She's shaggy and pain, but she's still brave enough to look you in the eye.
Because that's what my dad taught her.
This is the kind of pain and disdain that you need. We're not yelling and arguing with you guys because we feel that all officers are bad. We're just saying the system is so broken that this is what ends up happening. And the officers have no compassion for black and brown people and don't think they have families that love them. This is what we're saying. You have to start looking in your guys' eyes and say, you guys, please do the right thing. Think before your actions because this is gonna hurt and damage and tear a family apart. Please look at us. And you probably have children of your own in there. And know what that feels like when one of your own hurts. It could be the smallest, the littlest things. A wound underneath, a bad day at school. And how you, as her hero or his hero, would fight to the, to the day. Imagine she would have had that. And one of the deputies, all your time, in your place, and took that apart. Like you were the champion. I need you to hear and see this. This is the pain. This is what we're talking about. We're not in this fight against you guys to say you guys are all evil. We're saying, if you guys can't do your job, you have people who do the job to save people, to save us, to save them. I need you to hear this. When you go back and you detail the humanity and the passion, I know that you have so. I know that you feel it. And that needs to be resonated to other officers. So they can understand, after that gun goes off, they're honoring you and you're coming back. We are not bored, we're not sad, we're not, he was not a human. We do not come here as enemies. We come here as change makers, as you guys are policymakers. If you don't look at that young girl's eyes and that pain of the family and start saying that we really have to start making some real changes that are going to make sense and not be robotic in the approach of how we do things, we are in a bad place. And I would've thought that after the pandemic, we would've graduated to be a little bit closer to each other. And it still seems that we're still separating. If you continue to come to our community for our votes, come for our votes, but you won't come, you won't come for the humanity of what happens to us in moments when we are pleading in help? Help, 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 because we're suffering. It speaks to the volume what our city of Sacramento is really up against. You cannot walk out of here and say you do not care for who?
Jaime Naranjo.
For who?
Jaime Naranjo.
For who?
Jaime Naranjo.
Or care about the people and the pain that they're in. This is not a war against individuals. This is a war against a system that continues to allow individuals to sneak right by and act as if what they did was okay. What happened was not okay. And we all know that. We have seen too many times in our communities outside where people can go to grocery stores, kill 10 people.
And make it out alive.
And make it out alive. With military-style weapons. We've seen in other communities, de-escalation tactics, law enforcement out there for 12 hours until they got that person out safely. There is no way a lapse of 30 seconds should've had, say his name?
Jaime Naranjo.
Say his name?
Jaime Naranjo.
Say his name?
Jaime Naranjo.
Death. Kiss your family members, kiss those babies when you guys get home or any loved one. Because you never know whether it could be their day, just like they never knew that it would've been that day. They would be kissing their father for the last time.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace. No justice, no peace.
Do you have another speaker following Barry?
I got anyone to take care of my mom.
Mr. McClintock, just one second. Mr. Serna, did you want to meet with the family? Okay. Ryan, would you be so kind to maybe hold your comments? I think Supervisor Serna wanted to meet with the family before they departed. And we certainly hear your testimony, but maybe I could suggest we take maybe a five-minute recess and you'll be the first speaker back, or you'll give that?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and we'll return and Mr. McClintock is the next speaker. Okay, I'm gonna call the four supervisors back into session after a brief recess and we're going to continue taking off-agenda comments. And we'll go ahead and call a reestablished quorum if you could, ma'am.
Yes, Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy? Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. And with that, Mr. McClintock was good enough to defer while we had the recess, so I'll call Ryan to the, pardon.
My name is Ryan McClintock. I'm a program manager with Public Health Advocates. I also serve as an executive steering committee member on the MHSA Steering Committee. I also have recently been appointed to the Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Body. I usually do not give a damn about titles. But I give you these titles to show you what my commitment has been to trying to fix this very fucking issue. Yes, I'm going to cuss. Yes, it's gonna be uncomfortable because this family is too fucking uncomfortable. I went across the street for years arguing about the same problem. Fall of 2020, we started the conversation about emergency mental health response. That's non-police involved. We started the conversation. It's now October 2022, we still aren't live. We have MH firsts who stepped up and said, we're just gonna do whatever the hell we can because we can't wait for bodies to keep dropping. And they still are. We protect law enforcement over and over and over again after they take our lives. This mental health death isn't the first one. Michael McIntyre. Do we forget that? Do we forget the mass outrage that came from that? How many lives are still impacted to this day? And yet, we're still doing the same things. We waited two, we're waiting over two years to have something in place from the county level to respond to these mental health crises. Why aren't we partnering with the city of Sacramento? Why isn't 911 dispatch be very clear about this? And Jim Barnes, Sheriff's Department, I need you to hear this. Why aren't you giving approval for law, for dispatchers to provide resources to Mental Health First and other community-based responses when these emergency crises come up? Law enforcement wouldn't have to be dispatched if dispatch can actually send somebody else out there. They're not approved. Look into it. I've already done it. I am so fucking mad that our community keeps losing resources. Resources that are people. I don't do this, this work for money or any of that shit. I do it because I've been born and raised in this community and I've seen too many lost or lives behind bullshit. This is bullshit. Our emergency dispatch needs to approve community-based resources to respond. We need a regular budget that mirrors that of law enforcement to make sure people are not incarcerated or killed for being in crisis. We have to be a county that cares first. We're talking about a jail expansion for mental, mental health. Why isn't that just a mental health facility? That has nothing to do with the carceral system? Or if it does, that actually brings people further away from the jail than closer to it? That's trauma standing behind us. That's trauma. Done. You walked through that building, you seen it. Why are we looking at still trying to give more resources there when they have the majority of our county resources? Let's hold them accountable. Let's look at the risk assessment for the insurance that we have to pay every time that this county sued for it? And hold law enforcement accountable for that? What happens when that coverage gets pulled? I bet you that if Sue changes then, I bet you it goes beyond just training then. I bet you officers are decertified and fired and held accountable then. If this body can't do anything else, I know that you can influence the resources, the financial resources. I know that you call them accountable that way. We need to do so. We need to mandate that the wellness crisis call center response team has 911 access, full data access, and dispatch privileges to be able to, again, send out community-based responses. Because I swear to God, if I have to call 911 for my sister when she's in crisis and I've had to do it, I may be going to jail for putting hands on an officer because they're putting my sister's life at the risk. I'm doing everything I can to avoid being in that position. I'm literally dedicating hours that I should be spending with my family to do that. I need you guys to make a bold decision. Sue, I need you fully engaged. I need you fully engaged. I lived in your district. I worked there too. I need you to show up for the people who are dying, not some fucking bird. Please do something. Yes, you're filling my passion. And I know it's uncomfortable and I need you to sit in it. I need you to take action. Rich DeFens not up here and I have the same words for him. We can't wait any longer.
Thanks, Ryan.
Say his name. Say his name. Say his name. Say his name. Justice for who? Justice for who? Justice for who? Justice for who? Jaime Naranjo.
Okay, we do have callers on the phone on off-agenda item on this item?
We do. Please, are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Please transfer the first caller. I'm gonna ask Jillian to transfer the first queue. Hi caller, if you could mute the meeting in the background and then please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, yes. My comment is, the board, generally speaking, doesn't care about mental health. And it shows by their actions and outcomes in our community. My comments are gonna be all over the place today because I had several things I wanted to say. Number two, the board doesn't truly hold any power. Us, we do, the people. Vote these incompetent bodies out from their seats. Number three, this is a quote from Samuel Adams. Once people get power, they have an unwillingness to part with it. And that's what I feel is happening at the board. And originally, I called to say, end the state of emergency because we are still in a state of emergency in the county of Sacramento. The CDC accidentally inflated children's COVID death numbers in a coding error. Misinformation resolution, it still hasn't been updated to reflect accurate information. And the last thing I wanted to say is that Placer County has a mobile crisis team. And they're on almost 24/7. So if Placer County can have a mobile crisis team, mental health team for adults and children, why can't Sacramento County do the same? Politicians don't care about mental health. They don't care about preventative care. They just care about getting emergency money or whatever money they can. And they say they're gonna fund mental health, but they don't. They fund whatever they feel like it, whoever's pushing the narrative. That's what they fund and who they fund. They take action only to show something. But they truly don't put the money where it's supposed to go. That's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you, caller.
The narrative. Hi caller, could you turn the meeting off in the background or mute it? And then start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes. Wow, I don't really know what else I could say that hasn't been said today by the family, by activists, by the community. I just want to raise up some voices and give some comments. Mine are gonna be all, all over the place as well. First of all, I think we should all be aware that something was said earlier. This board is severely influenced and controlled by law enforcement. Almost every board across the nation is. This is a law enforcement state and a law enforcement nation. And you don't get elected unless the sheriff or the police say so. So we need to know that. We need to know when we're talking to these people that they are in the pockets of sheriffs and the police. And it's shown in their actions. Their money goes where they want it to go. Justice for Jaime Naranjo. He was visually murdered in front of his lawn. I'm a mental health worker and I know for certain that this should've never happened. Absolutely never happened. This is absolutely unacceptable. And yet, we're here time and time again saying the same old thing, the same old thing, year after year after year, and nothing is changing. Why? Going back to what I said, police are the biggest gang in this country. And they protect their own. And they're protecting this board and the board protects them. I don't, you know, Serna, he's in the district. I think he needs to do a lot of work and I expect him to reach out to the family and do something. Other members of the board, like Sue Frost, who organizes with white supremacist groups in Sacramento, I don't really expect much from her at all. I don't expect much from Sue Frost, who organizes with Proud Boys and white supremacists. I don't, I don't expect much. But I expect some more from the other board members. Invest in the resources, invest in people, not police. Listen to us, listen to our cries, listen to our anger, listen to it. Don't just push it aside. We're not going away. People have been fighting and will continue to fight. People have been fighting, and will continue to fight. We'll continue to fight for Jaime. Everybody in this room will continue to fight until they catch breath. And this is just unacceptable. You have to do something. Mental health is important. Mental health is not a crime. We need mental health responders, not police. This is, this is, I'm a loss for words, like a lot of people. I'm a loss for words when an officer can shoot a man in his own yard, handcuff him, search the house, make fun of the family, and just get away. Who knows what he's doing? He could be chilling right now on his couch watching TV, and he killed a man. And he's getting paid for it probably, too, with our money, my money. My money goes to pay these people who go and assassinate people in front of their houses and walk away scot-free.
Caller, I need you to conclude.
One more thing.
Sure.
Okay. One more thing. Justice for Jaime Naranjo, release the footage. Fire the officer. ACAB.
Thank you, caller.
Next caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Christina Gilardi, and I'm calling from District One. Law enforcement officers are not equipped to respond to mental and behavioral health crises. Even in the best of circumstances, de-escalation is not the same as trauma-informed and wellness-focused care and response. Jaime Naranjo would still be here if we had stopped pretending that training cops in de-escalation was adequate. You cannot override your basic law enforcement training and culture that primes officers to see threat. We must stop sending cops to mental health crisis calls. You are responsible for ensuring this happens. Phil Serna, Patrick Kennedy, Rich Desmond, Sue Frost, and Don Natoli. Invest in 24/7 behavioral health crisis response and prioritize action right now. Not one more life should be lost because of the slow roll of the government process. The community is demanding release of unedited body camera footage, return footage from Naranjo's personal security camera, and release the name of the officer who killed Jaime and decertify them. And finally, fund a 24/7 non-police emergency response for mental health calls immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Okay, next caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
My name is Liz Blum, and I'm calling in solidarity with the family of Jaime Naranjo. I'm so sorry for your loss, and I'm so sorry that we failed you. I think it's important to reiterate that Jaime Naranjo was murdered due to the culture of the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. If our loved ones in mental health crisis are not murdered, they are arrested and incarcerated. We have to remember that these sheriff's deputies that murder people experiencing mental health crisis are the same ones that cause premature deaths in Sacramento County jails, the same ones who throw people in solitary confinement, punishing people for experiencing mental health crisis. They are the same ones who would be running a new mental health jail facility that you all seem to still want to build. So please hear us again when we say that the structure of any building will not prevent sheriff's deputies from killing people using force and abuse, but also ignorance and neglect. And this fact has been confirmed over and over and over again by third-party experts who have outlined hundreds of things that the county can be doing right now that don't involve a new jail building. They are also highly recommend, they highly recommend that contracting out for inpatient treatment outside of the jail should be seriously pursued by the county. So yes, we could choose to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on building a new mental health hospital instead of a jail. Patrick, Don, Phil, and Sue, why do we still not have a concrete plan for diverting people with serious mental illness from the jail? Not because we don't have the answer of which gaps to fill and which policies to change, it's because this has not been prioritized. And why is the alternative to 911 program launch continuously being delayed? This could have saved Jaime Naranjo's life. Please let yourself feel the pain that is in this room today. Please let this impact you. Let this motivate you to realize that it is possible to implement policy change that will provide actual care to people experiencing mental health crisis in the community before law enforcement are ever involved, but also diverting people from the jail to community-based mental health treatment. Justice for Jaime Naranjo.
Thank you, Liz.
All right. James, if you could transfer the next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Joy. I live in District One, the same as Jaime Naranjo, and I'm also calling in solidarity with the Naranjo family. I hope you all feel this today. Feel everything, and that with that substantial change can come. Please hear us. Please hear the community. Please hear the family. And with that, I want to uplift the family's demands to release the unedited body cam footage, return or restore the Naranjo family's personal security footage, release the name of the officer who killed Jaime, and decertify them, and to fund a 24/7 non-police emergency response for mental health calls immediately. We see this working with Mental Health First. We know it can work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Greetings, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kian Bliss. I'm a constituent of District One. And the question I want to ask is whether you all are listening. I'm calling in support of the family of Jaime Naranjo and demanding justice because right now you have a sheriff's department that not only has gross policy deficiencies and neglecting its practices, but it also, its culture is dirt-ridden. It is a white supremacist culture that puts white lives above black and brown lives on a consistent basis, and it shows in how they react to every call that they make, which includes this mental health wellness check that was given. And I'm really of the mind of whether you're listening to the pain, to the frustration, to the sadness that has been coming up before you right now. Personally, I believe at least two of you are listening, and I know that another two aren't listening. But I'm wondering whether that third, whether that fifth person it actually is. That's my supervisor, Phil Serna. Are you listening to this? See, some of us that have been paying attention to the county long enough understand that this is, like, this vote today on the military equipment use policy is a political vote, and that that's probably, like, that is probably the primary motivation within this. Because as we have, when AB41 came into effect at the beginning of this year, the Sacramento County Sheriff literally sat on its hands for 10 months, did absolutely no, no serious, meaningful effort to get community outreach into this, and waited until the last possible moment when you have a deadline on October 24th to vote on this policy. Otherwise, they don't have access to their military equipment. And those of you that are politicos know, that's a career-ending decision, because if you're the one that votes no against this policy, that's your act. That's the sheriff having leverage over you to say that you were the one that voted against the policy when the next high-risk situation, hostage situation or whatever, and they blame the lack of access to military equipment as to blame if somebody gets hurt within that. You know it. I know it. And that's what's really going to motivate this, like, your vote today, I think. I hope I'm wrong, but that's, that's just the way it is in the United States, unfortunately. So you still have until October 24th, and the sheriff has had full access to his military equipment well up until that point. They had full access to their equipment during the wellness check on Jaime Naranjo. And less than 24 hours after they were lying to you last week, saying that they, that you need to approve this now, or they can't have access to their less lethal rounds? They were, like, they literally chose not to use that. They should have had access. Where were those less lethal beanbag rounds, huh? Nowhere. And this isn't the first time they've done it. You remember in 2017, this exact same situation, where someone in a mental health crisis call, armed with nothing more than a rock, and running away from the sheriff's department, was gunned down by the sheriff during rush hour traffic, putting dozens of commuters at risk, when they had full access to this less lethal military technology, they claim. And it cost the county. It cost a family, their son, their brother, and it cost this county $1.7 million. And it precipitated the confrontation that this board had with the sheriff that forced a new IG on you, which, where are they at? You just hired a new one, right? I need you all to actually look deep inside yourselves and decide what kind of people you are. What kind of person, like, am I going to be in this crucial moment, in this, like, in this decision-making? Am I motivated by what works, what is politically convenient for me? Or am I motivated by what actually matters to my constituents, to the needs of my constituents? Because those are the people you're supposed to be serving. You know it. I sincerely hope that I, like, that I'm wrong about some of you on there. I really do. But you have a family right now that is in this chamber, hurting, pleading with you to actually show real leadership here, and this is your moment that you can actually do it. Demand more of your law enforcement, because right now, their culture is dirt-poor. They have no fucking regard for your authority, much less the people in this county that they're supposed to be serving. They're a for-profit business venture, and you need to actually take action to rein them in and hold them genuinely accountable. And you can do it with this military equipment policy. Period.
Kian, I need you to actually conclude.
Justice for Jaime Naranjo.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Okay, next caller.
Okay, and then we have one more caller. This is the final caller, and I'm going to close the queue after them.
Okay.
Excuse me. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Palia, and as a community member, resident of South Sacramento, and former neighbor of the Naranjo family, I am saddened and angry at what unfolded last Wednesday. From a very young age, it is ingrained in our psyche. If you need help, you call 911. And that is what Jaime Naranjo's wife did. She called 911 because her husband needed help. Jaime needed help. Jaime was then shot and killed by an officer. So I ask, whom can we call when we no longer feel safe calling those who take an oath to serve and protect, when there is a blatant disregard for our community members' lives? What happened to Jaime is not unique. We have heard so many stories of people who have been shot and killed by officers while having a mental health crisis. But when does it stop? They say silence is complicity. Please stop remaining silent and enact lasting change that prevents this from happening again to another Jaime, another family, and another community. The demands are simple: accountability and change. Release the body cam footage, return the family surveillance camera, release the name of the officer, and change how mental health crises are handled. Having a mental health crisis is not a crime, but shooting someone in their own home who is in crisis should be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller.
Okay, let me just check, make sure no one slipped through, and we're closed.
Okay. All right. Thank all of our speakers, and certainly condolences to the family. Obviously, there's a lot for us, the board members, to think about, and I know that some of the board members want to weigh in, so I'm going to turn Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And during the break, I did have a chance to speak directly with the family, most notably the, now the widow of Jaime Naranjo. And committed to the family that they are to consider my office a resource at their disposal for the purpose of making sure that they have timely access to information as it becomes available. There is, there are a number of investigative processes that are already in motion, not the least of which is the responsibility of our Inspector General, which I know she's in chambers here today, so I'm going to invite her up, as well as Siobhan Qatari, who's in charge of our social services, who could maybe just speak briefly to what the community should expect in terms of that investigative process. I think, given the fact that it's off-agenda, I know we can't go too deep into the subject, but I believe, especially after the very emotional testimony that we've heard this morning, that it's owed to the family, it's owed to the community. So I'd ask that they please come to the podium.
Good morning. Good morning to the community and the members of the board. My name is Francine Tornor, and I'm the newly-appointed Inspector General. First and foremost, I would like to give my deepest condolences to Jaime Naranjo's family. I know this is a very difficult time for them. As far as the process, when it comes to the Inspector General's office, my understanding is, at the completion of the sheriff's office investigation into this incident, that the IG will get full access to the investigation and everything that's encompassed in that investigation. Not only will I be looking at the thoroughness, fairness, and the process itself of the investigation, but I have taken note of all the concerns that were raised today by the family and the community. And my audit and investigation, and as far as it can be involved, will include those concerns as well. I will agree that, as a society, it's far too long that we're dealing with situations like this, and we have to come to some type of resolution to not continue to be here. It's unfortunate for all entities involved, but we do have to find a way. So I'll be working with the board and the community as well to get these issues looked into.
Thank you, Francine.
Francine, can I just ask you, and again, I know we don't have a sheriff's representative on this item specifically, but the release of the body cam footage, that's at the discretion of the sheriff, is that, is that accurate?
I believe with the current laws, it will be released.
County council may want to chime in.
Oh, county council, okay. Very good. Okay.
Take this one for you.
Okay.
Yes, the penal code does require release of the body-worn camera if requested by any party. It's penal code 827, 832.7, and it must be released within 45 days of the incident, unless there is a pending law enforcement investigation, in which case it would be, need to be released within 60 days or upon determination by the district attorney as to whether or not charges will be filed.
Okay. So that, and that clock starts running from the time?
From the date of the incident.
From the day of the incident. Dave?
I'd like to invite Siobhan to the podium. Thank you, Madam Inspector General. I appreciate the information.
Flo, maybe help out there. Thanks.
Siobhan, there, as you heard, there's, I think rightfully, a number of concerns that were expressed by the family members, the community, social justice advocates, and activists here this morning about the time it's taken to shift into the paradigm that I think you heard clearly from the board now years ago, unfortunately, that we cannot continue to have the same model of response to those that are in mental health distress by uniformed peace officers. In fact, the sheriff's department itself has been very clear that they don't want to be in the practice of doing that. It's kind of one of those rare instances where there's no argument from the bureaucracy of it to move in a different direction. But yet, here we are, you know, 24 months later. I think there's, you know, I'll let others up here speak for themselves, but I'm frustrated that that hasn't been deployed. I know Supervisor Kennedy has been... I know Supervisor Kennedy has been very close to that, that subject, we all are, but I know he's the one that kind of initiated the concept to come before the board. But it's only as good as its practical application. Otherwise, it's, like many mentioned, rhetoric. And I, for one, don't want to be in the rhetoric business, I want to be in the problem-solving business. And this is unfortunately an issue that, from all appearances, of course, there's lengthy investigation that's going to take place, that someone was in distress last Wednesday and the incident left a human being dead. That can't continue, it should not continue. And if we're going to do what we say we're going to do, I would like you to speak briefly to when the community can expect that new practice to be in place.
Yeah. Thank you, Supervisor. And also, I'd like to extend my condolences to the family. I wanted to just mention a few things that came up today, questions about different types of services that we have, and just let the community know, because I know there's been a call for investment into a 24/7 non-law enforcement response to mental health crises, which the board did approve, as you, as you said, to be fully funded. So we do have that program that has been under development. Unfortunately, we have had a workforce shortage and crisis, and a number of new initiatives starting at the same time. And so this has kind of exacerbated our ability to hire up. Nonetheless, I just wanted to mention a few things we do have going, and then can talk about this program specifically. We do, we were able to award contracts for 10 different core wellness centers. So these are community-based organizations that will have core sites around the county, 10 of them where folks can walk in and receive services upon request. And so that's an exciting new effort, and I do want to inform the community and let them know this is one way to access services. We also have 11 teams that the board has supported, and these are co-law enforcement response. So these are mental health clinicians that go out into the field with law enforcement. And I recognize that's not what is being asked for here. And then additionally, the board did fund our mental health urgent center to go 24/7. Currently, it's going from... Okay, currently, it's open until midnight, and it will be going 24/7 within the next month or so. And then the response teams, which we have going out into the field for homelessness, we currently have six behavioral health work team members, and we are hiring 11 more to go out into the field to address homelessness and encampments. So those are all some of the other programs that we have going. With regards to this one specifically, we were looking at a November timeframe to do a launch, at least a partial launch, of the teams that we have hired. As the board knows, we had a pretty significant recruitment fair that took place a few weeks ago, so we're hopeful that we got some good candidates out of that, and we'll be able to do that. In the meantime, though, I did communicate with my team today during the presentation, and we will be meeting tomorrow to see what other stopgap measures, partnerships with community-based organizations, we may be able to put in place so that we don't extend this longer than need be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, a couple things. While I know that it's certainly not the optimal way that the community sees what we have in place now, which is mental health clinicians that are joined by our deputies to respond to calls for assistance, whether, you know, it's a call that there's maybe a threat to harm to self or others, having actually done, you know, a half-day ride-along and actually seen for myself in response to that type of call with a clinician and a deputy, that was an instance that ended very peacefully. In fact, the deputy didn't even go on the property of the individual, the clinician did, and was able to help. It took some time, but the clinician was able to, to help the individual. So I guess one of the things that I want to say publicly, one of the things that I'm most curious about, and I suspect there's probably others, is that even though we haven't had this launch that is going to come next month, why, you know, why wasn't there a clinician that joined the deputy in this instance in response to this call? Because I, again, having seen with my own eyes the positive results of that, that type of joint effort to similar calls, I'm going to hazard a guess that things may have ended differently.
Yeah, I can't answer specifically as to this.
I'm not asking you to.
Oh, okay.
I'm actually asking, I'm looking at our Inspector General to make sure that that's on her list of things to really scrutinize, because to me, that is perhaps kind of the crux of the matter in terms of what occurred. I'm not, I'm trying to, my best to hold off judgment, because we need to understand, you know, what happened. We need to see the body cam footage. But my understanding is that clinician was not available at that time. So I would hope that that is going to be a targeted part of the investigation. Again, while not perfect, I just believe wholeheartedly that it could have made a big difference. So, I know Supervisor Kennedy wanted to chime in here, too.
Patrick?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I guess, you know, I just want to take away, and I'll agree with everything that Supervisor Serna said. I guess my big takeaway here, and it's not frustration, it's anger, is, and I'm not pointing fingers at any particular staff people, I know there's a lot of people who have been working on this issue and, and take it very personally and want to see it succeed. But we heard about system failures, this is a system failure, plain and simple. When, when I brought this forward as a concept two years ago, I brought with it two models that have been successful throughout the country. You know, if we're letting perfect be the enemy of good here, we've got to get something rolled out that's good, that's going to, that's going to protect people and provide them more appropriate care that is needed. So if I seem a little out of character in my level of anger, it's because, as much as many people may have been working hard on this, I appreciate the support from executive staff to provide, you know, a fair amount of funds to get this up and going. Two years is unacceptable. And, and so we've got to do better. And that's what I'm going to leave behind today. Obviously, we won't talk about many specifics as the investigation has to continue.
I wanted to add, though, and I think this is, you know, it's a, you know, this is a very powerful message we hear here this morning. We've heard it with, not always with, you know, the tragedy of obviously the loss of life, but certainly with, as recent as this one has been with Jaime. But I, I guess I would just say that my takeaway today, and I think what I want to convey is that, you know, the call to action's been here. This board has certainly funded significantly. I think staff has worked diligently to try to stand it up in a way that obviously we would ensure that we would be responsive and that we could address situations like the one that occurred. And I just, I get this sense of urgency. And I think what we need to do is, and again, I certainly would, you know, working through the county executive, if there are community partners, if there are, you know, the assemblies of teams that we're already assembling, November 1st is, you know, another, you know, 27 days away, 28 days away, that's four weeks. Luck can happen in four weeks' time. A lot's happened over the last two years. Obviously, tragedy struck last Wednesday, and nothing that we're going to do here today is going to change or bring back Jaime. But I think in light of what the concerns, it's certainly been expressed here, and I think the board has taken into account, certainly our staff has taken those into account, we need to find a way to assure that we've got the ability to respond, to assist in these situations. If a 911 call came in, and if that call had come in at 9:30, would we have been better able to respond? Because the team that is currently deployed, I mean, that's a question that comes to my mind, but that's why we need 24/7. We don't need to have it from, from, you know, eight, nine to five or nine to six. Again, there are costs associated with that, but the costs associated with the loss of life, there's no return from that. And I guess I would just say that I think that, you know, the urgency is now, and again, Siobhan, obviously, you're not a miracle worker, but we need the ability to stand something up, to be able to, the next time a call like this comes in, which could be this very moment, is to be able to respond accordingly and to do our best to de-escalate the situation, to save lives, to protect the lives of all those who may be involved in that call. But, you know, it's just, you know, it hits me this morning, and again, certainly, I can't begin to know the grief or pain, certainly, we've all lost loved ones, not necessarily in the situations that we have, you know, had described in great detail today, and obviously, the investigations will, will bear out, you know, what exactly occurred. But I think, again, you know, this isn't a matter of funding. This county has sufficient funding to do it. We have the contract authority that's vested with county executive, but with Siobhan, to do that, to, again, to do it, you know, prudently, but to put in things in place that can be responsive. And I guess the question I would pose, too, is that it's not just about getting someone to the call, but coming through dispatch, how those calls are handled and how they're assigned, because that's, that's, that's very key, and that, you know, that requires certainly cooperation with the sheriff's department, with dispatch, and then having the people available who can be there, and be there, you know, as quickly as possible, and hopefully save lives and have outcomes that we would all want for, for us and for our loved ones. And so I guess that's the message I leave again, this is off-agenda, but I think, obviously, Siobhan, you've heard that, certainly, and you've heard that others, and again, I, you know, appreciate the emotion that has welled up here because of the, you know, the tragedy of all this. But as the daughter said, I think, you know, one of the things that can come out of this is that no more lives will be lost because of a situation like this. And, and that doesn't take away the grief or the sorrow or the loss that a family would feel for forever. But I, but I do think we need to do something now. And, and again, now needs to be now. And, and, and so I don't know, Anne, if you wanted to weigh in at all, but I certainly, Siobhan, I think you've responded, and I certainly return to my colleagues if there's any other comments, but.
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Quittari and Mr. Jones and I have already had a brief conversation about really working on something that we could do quickly until we get this completely launched.
Right. Yes, Mrs. Serna?
Yeah, to that, I mean, that's, that's good to know, but we heard from one gentleman about his own experience, and I'm just going to kind of use the term as a cultural broker when it comes to being able to be non-threatening in terms of how someone, whether you're deputized or not, responds. So if you're telling us, Siobhan, that essentially it's a personnel problem, we don't have enough people to do the job, I know Sacramento real well, I'm a native Sacramento. One of the things we're blessed with is we have more CBOs than we know what to do with, right? We have people that care, that are, you know, organized as nonprofits, but also just as average community members that give a damn about their neighbors. So, you know, I don't want to try and establish the architecture of how we have a interim ability to respond without force, but it seems to me we have quite a few resources that are beck and call that shame on us if we're not going to tap into that.
You know, just a quick follow-on, I think, one of the things, and again, maybe it is part of what the rollout, but I think, again, you do have community providers, I think Phil said it very well, we are blessed in lots of ways, and one of the blessings we have, we have people that do care, they come from all walks of life, from all, you know, life experiences. And so if there are, it seemed to me that a successful program would have community partners as a part of it. You might have dedicated county staff or folks that, you know, have certain qualifications and that are, you know, are, are trained, but I think, again, that doesn't discount anything that relates to folks who can be there, be there to assist, and to, again, to me, it's about saving lives and, and making sure that people are cared for properly and that, you know, tragedies avoided. I mean, it's, it's a tragedy all the way around, you know, when I think about it, Anne, I think it reflects upon our ability to do something more and better and be consistent in doing that. So with that, Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. I just wanted to extend my deepest condolences to the family and to the community. It's devastating that a situation can so quickly escalate and turn into something so horrible and heartbreaking. And I, I know, you know, we, we have an investigative process which we'll work through, and I'm very glad that we have our Inspector General here to, to be that person for, that, that can help actually be that liaison between the community and, communication between the community and the sheriff's department and the county. And I just, I don't think I can really add to what the other supervisors said at all. I mean, over time, we've been trying so hard. I want to thank Siobhan for, for kind of summarizing some of the things we're doing and some of our challenges with, with staffing, but I'm glad that we're doing everything we can. I support doing everything we can to, to get those programs up and running as quickly as possible and to improve, you know, the processes and, and the situation. Obviously, it's not perfect, and, but we all want to do better, so we're working on it, and I, I'm so sorry for, for this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Sue.
Thanks.
Okay. 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 All right. Thank you, Siobhan.
Thank you.
If there's other questions, I'm going to, just before we go to the next item, we'll just take one more brief moment of silence, certainly to, I think, express our thoughts in our own way and condolences to the Narango family and certainly to the memory of Jaime. So we'll just do that for a moment, please. Again...
Jaime Narango. Jaime Narango. Jaime Narango. Just as food. 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 Jaime Narango.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you all for being with us and for your testimony and comments this morning. We do need to move forward with the agenda, and again, with that, you're certainly welcome to stay for the remaining portion of the meeting. So I'm going to turn to the clerk. That was our, the off-agenda items, and we need to go back to the agenda.
Okay, so moving on to your consent matters, items two through 26. I do need a motion to drop item number seven. This is to authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute the retroactive agreement for parking and technology consulting services with Aberdeen Management Group.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if there's anyone from our executive team to answer. I note that Airport Director is not in chambers, don't know if she's on the phone.
She is.
Okay, I'd just like to understand why we're being asked to drop it.
She's on the phone.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Serna, for your question. This is Cindy Nicole, Director of Airports. We will be bringing this back to the board. We are dropping it because it needs to be an amendment to the existing contract rather than a new contract.
Okay. All right, thank you. With that, I move to drop.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded to drop the item from the agenda. Do we have anyone wish to speak on that item?
We do not have anyone for item number seven, so I'm going to close that queue right now.
Okay. All right, then, please vote.
An anonymous vote. And I have a couple of other notes on...
Yes.
Did you say something? Oh, sorry. On item number eight, you're adopting an ordinance amending sections two... On item number eight, you're adopting an ordinance amending sections 2.09.500, 2.61.260, 8.04.001, 8.04.030, 8.04110, 8.04130, 8.16.030, 8.16.050, 8.24.065, 8.34.055, and 8.36.130 of the Sacramento County Code to change the name of Sacramento County Animal Care and Regulation to Sacramento County Animal Care and Services. You waived reading on this on September 27th, and then you also have another adoption of an ordinance for item 11. We do have public comments for that, too, and I'll read that one into the record when you call that item.
Okay.
That's all in my notes.
Thank you, Flo. So let me turn to Board members, were there any other items? We have commenters on item 11, we will call that out separately in just a moment. Were there any other items, though, that folks wanted to address on the consent calendar? All right. I see no one in the queue, so we'll hold on to consent calendar then and ask you to go ahead and call item 11.
Item number 11?
Item 11, yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Adopt an ordinance related to the approval of a military equipment policy, authorization for continued use of military equipment, and authorization to purchase and acquire military equipment in the future in accordance with policy. And you waived reading on this on September 27th.
Okay. And we do have a group that has requested a 15-minute combined presentation to make some comments, and we're going to take just a moment. I also note that we have folks, a couple of folks in chambers who've signed up to speak to that item as well. And so with that, unless there's any board comments, I'm going to go ahead and invite the presenters to come up, and they have an order which they wish to present, so all that, you self-introductions, I'll put 15 minutes on the clock, and we'll get started here in just a second.
Oh, we have a presentation as well.
Do you, okay, PowerPoint? Okay.
Yes, please. Yeah.
Who does the slides?
Oh, it's her.
Oh.
Yeah.
Dope.
Yeah, you can control from up in there. Should work. The clicker, does it work?
It should. How do you press play on the video? Oh, dope. Okay.
So do you want to start with the video?
Yes, please. Let's start with that.
As the undersheriff said, "Without the approval of this equipment, less-than-lethal tools will be taken away from our patrol officers." This will force a situation that, when confronted by an assailant that is armed with a rock or a knife, the only option that will be left available after trying to verbally de-escalate the situation will be to use deadly force.
You knew he had a mental issue, and yet you continued to shoot. He had no weapon, a rock is, you know, that's what they said, a rock.
While Sacramento County Sheriff Scott Jones released the video after years of pressure from news outlets in Sacramento and a lawsuit from the Sacramento Bee, he saw Sacramento County deputies firing at 32-year-old McIntyre several times as he ran away, said he was throwing rocks at them. A year later, a Sacramento County Office of Inspector General report found deputies fired 28 shots hitting McIntyre seven times. And two years ago, Sacramento County District Attorney Ann Marie Schubert said the actions were justified. The county reached a $1.7 million settlement with the family back in January.
Sacramento, a 55-year-old man has died after being shot by a Sacramento County deputy.
Sacramento County Sheriff's Department was called here today for a mental health crisis. My mom called the police for help, and they killed my dad. They killed him.
I want to say, "Good afternoon." We're back here a week after we've already discussed Assembly Bill 41. One week later, and unfortunately, it took less than 24 hours after last week's county meeting for the Sheriff's Department to kill another brown man suffering from a mental health crisis. Only less than 24 hours after Captain Dan Donelli stated that, "Should the Sheriff's Department not get their military equipment policy approved, they would be left with no other option but to use lethal force on a community member who has a knife or a rock." I attended Jaime Naranjo's vigil last Thursday night, and I could do nothing. I could do nothing but cry the whole way through as Jaime's partner, children, grandchildren, and neighbors talked about their memories of Jaime. Their stories of their father reminded me of my father. I was watching this family experience one of my deepest fears and a fear many Black and Brown communities face every single day. It is not a surprise to us that military equipment is more frequently used on our Black and Brown communities, who then are left to suffer long-term physical, emotional, and mental trauma. Given that I have personally experienced the trauma that these military weapons can have on an individual, I know there is nothing non-lethal about militarizing our Sheriff's As you already know, this policy is not in compliance with AB 481. There's Slide 1 where it talks about the acquisition of military equipment and its deployment in our communities adversely impacts the public safety and welfare, including increased risk of civilian deaths, significant risks to civil rights, civil liberties, physical and psychological well-being, and increment of significant financial costs. It states, "The public has a right to know about any funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment by state or local government officials, as well as the right to participate in any government agency's decision to fund, acquire, or use such equipment." It states, "Decisions regarding whether or how military equipment is funded, acquired, or used should give strong consideration to the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties, and should be based on meaningful public input." And it states, "The lack of public forum to discuss the acquisition of military equipment jeopardizes the relationship police have with the community, which can be undermined when law enforcement is seen as a occupying force rather than a public safety service." The sheriffs have had more than enough time to make sure their military policy was in full compliance with AB 481, but that has not yet happened, and by law, as the Board of Supervisors, you cannot pass this policy until it is in compliance with AB 481. Remember, whatever decision you make today, the blood and generational trauma to come will not just be on the sheriff's hands, but they will also be on yours as well. I'm going to pass it.
I'm going to get ready to set up the next video. I go to the video? Okay. Okay. So, sorry about that. So, really quick, my name is Constable Zingapan. I am the Director of the Black Zebra Impact Team, and I come here yet again to show you some documentation of what's happening on the streets of the Sacramento City and the county. Unfortunately, last week, your Sheriff's Department shared some examples of how they think the military equipment could be used, but I'm actually here to show you the history of how this military equipment has been used. So if we can go ahead and please play this video.
Maybe speak a bit to the practical and historical use, if any, of the type of equipment that's in the inventory that could or would be used in a, and I don't even know if I'm using the right term, in a crowd-control environment?
Certainly, thank you. So, the Sacramento Sheriff's Office doesn't encounter a lot of civil unrest in the unincorporated areas. Where we have been involved is on mutual aid calls with Sacramento Police Department in the downtown area.
And CHP.
And CHP as well.
And so, this is some of those mutual aid calls where they're coordinating with SAC Police and CHP. These are the George Floyd protests where protesters gathered against police brutality, and they were met with these military weapons. As you can see, these are some of the impact ammunitions that are touted, the less-lethal ammunitions, and they're just being fired indiscriminately into the crowd.
Ever, we don't have weapons.
There's also tear gas that's filling homes and businesses in the community.
For all their needs.
And this is the war zone that was left behind because of this military equipment.
What happened?
On the ground.
You got shot?
These are civilians trying to help civilians.
From the flashbangs that you give a fuck. They're firing these beanbag rounds that are half ounces of lead.
Oh, yeah, you want to see what they do?
Yeah, that shit. And then...
And again, these are military equipment. This is SAC PD right here, but it's the same equipment that SAC Sheriff has. This is what First Amendment protesters are being met with. This is the instance where your military equipment is being used. It's not being used for these superficial things that are on this attachment. This is actual history. This is actually what's happening with this military equipment. And you can see, again, completely shooting into crowds, hands up, folks aren't doing anything but their First Amendment right to protest. And these tear gas, audio, bullets, impact ammunitions, less-lethal rounds, beanbags, all kinds of things are being thrown into your constituents, as well as right in the heart of downtown Sacramento where lots of folks live and work.
Fuck, if it's got hit.
This is documentation of myself being shot for the first time ever, regardless of the press pass or the cameras that I had on me.
Okay. Shit! Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
This is a National Lawyers Guild legal observer being shot point-blank in the face with a plastic rubber bullet, excuse me, rubber bullet.
He believes it was a rubber bullet. As a member of the National Lawyers Guild, he was not there to protest, but to act as a witness in case any protester's rights were violated, wearing identifying gear like this neon hat. He says he was following orders from the police to stand on the sidewalk when he was hit.
I expect a wayward stray pepper ball. I expect maybe a ricochet, but to have an officer intentionally point a high-velocity rifle at my face at short range while I'm wearing this hat and shoot me in the face, I don't expect that.
He was wearing a gas mask at the time, but still received a concussion.
It may have fractured my skull had I not been wearing this mask.
He says as a nurse was giving him medical aid, officers continued firing at them.
And again, this goes to show, the military equipment brings military, a war zone, to the streets of our city and our county. Here you see tear gas canisters being left behind. This right here are the plastic or rubber bullets that were shot in people's faces. Besides Danny Garz, the legal observer, there are people who were blinded, there are people who were shot from up, from the torso up, which is against the military use of equipment, training, and procedures. And you see countless people, countless constituents went home with these bruises. And this is just the first, first impact. That gets way worse as it goes. And again, I know that because I was shot as well.
Is everyone okay? What happened?
I got hit. Like, they just opened fire, just like that. I wasn't even doing shit.
Look at this. This is a...
Again, I thank you for your time, and I hope you really watch these images, because this is actually the history, and this is actually how this military equipment has been used and will be used, and we really hope that you set up accountability and procedures to protect your constituents from that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Meg White. I'm a constituent of District 1. Phil Serna, that's yours. And I'm here also to comment about AB 481 and really the relationship that the SAC Sheriff has had and continues to have with the community. There should be another video here if you guys want to go ahead and play that one.
Procedures are in place for the continued oversight from our Professional Standards Division, the Sacramento County Office of the Inspector General, and the newly-formed Community Review Commission.
Report by the Sacramento County Inspector General details the events on May 8th, 2017. There are instances where the number of rounds fired at McIntyre were excessive, unnecessary, and put the community at risk. Commenting on the report, Sheriff Scott Jones told us, quote, "The opinion of the Inspector General is just that, a lay opinion, based on his own personal context and experience. It is not and cannot be a legal opinion or conclusion like it appears to purport." Michael McIntyre's family called first responders twice that day, claiming the 32-year-old was acting bizarrely and needed medical help. McIntyre refused to stop as deputies arrived, throwing rocks at them as he ran away. One deputy fired twice at McIntyre. A second fired eight rounds, and a third fired 18 rounds as he chased McIntyre through traffic.
Draw a little evolution of where we, as a Sheriff's Office, have kind of gone to and come from. There's been a big call for de-escalation, and how do we use less-lethal force in encounters with people maybe experiencing mental illness or whatever it may be, just having a bad day. And the Sheriff's Office has been real proactive.
In just five minutes to pass, between the time a wife called 911 for help and the fatal shots that ended her husband's life.
As law enforcement were making a welfare check at a home near Enrico Boulevard and Fruit Ridge Road, that's when the deputy shot and killed the man. But loved ones say Naranjo was in a mental health crisis.
They didn't pull their taser, they shot him three times. But we called for help, and my dad got took from us.
Going to ask for just a minute or two extra time to go ahead and get through my notes and thoughts as well. AB 481 was enacted to protect community members just like me, community members who do not feel safe, community members who have been abused and mistreated by law enforcement with no way for accountability or safety. Every single year, taxpayers shell out millions of dollars in lawsuits for the sheriff's behavior. AB 481 offers the hope, accountability, transparency, and more safety. If the sheriff has nothing to hide and the Board of Supervisors truly have public safety and fiscal responsibility at heart, then there is no reason not to hold the sheriff accountable to AB 481. That means, first of all, actually having meaningful public input. Supposedly, there was one meeting that was supposed to be publicized at a time. I didn't hear about it. Did anybody else hear about it? Nobody heard about it. But the idea that there was one also doesn't really make it seem like it's very meaningful. Not only does this meaningful input need to be taken in, but it also needs to actually be implemented into the policy. Second, we need demographic reporting. It's no secret that Black, Brown, and Poor communities experience police violence and brutality the most. It literally is written into AB 481. It's not just a countrywide problem, it's a Sacramento problem. Here in Sacramento, if you're African-American, you're seven times more likely to be incarcerated. You're more likely to deal with police in a violent way, and you're more likely to be stopped and searched, even though you're less likely to actually have anything on you. We also need actual accountability. As we've seen in the past, we can have all the oversight, but no accountability means the Sheriff's Department will keep killing community members in mental health crisis, and taxpayers will keep paying millions in wrongful death suits. As we saw with Michael McIntyre, excuse me, the sheriff said that the 28 bullets that got shot, or the six that were put in his back and the seventh that were put in his front, was all totally part of their policy, in spite of what the interdiction general report said, and in spite of what I can tell you a Community Review Commission would have said as well. The sheriff literally has no skin in the game. There's no repercussions for killing community members. Meanwhile, community programs suffer and families are torn apart. This is not an experience of the past. Just one week ago, Jaime Naranjo was in the midst of a mental health crisis, and he was gunned... a mental health crisis, and he was gunned down in his own home by the sheriff, less than five minutes after the call was made. What happens is, they come here and they talk to us and they say things, but that's not actually what happens out in the community. Less than 24 hours after Dan Donnelly sat in front of this board and claimed that these less-than-lethal resources would be used, and had the audacity to give the example of a rock, which sounds kind of crazy, but actually happened with Michael McIntyre, just 24 hours later Jaime Noronho's life was taken. For years, this board has claimed that they have no authority over the sheriff because it's an elected position, and thus takes no responsibility for the violence. AB 481 offers the power back to the people, and this board gets to enforce that accountability, that transparency, and prevent more lives lost. You should vote no today. You really should. But I understand why that would be a career-ending decision. But there is nothing stopping you from modifying this policy next month. We don't have to wait a full year to be sure that we make the sheriff be in compliance and potentially start to rebuild some trust in the community. You can keep our community safe by forcing law enforcement to actually have to enforce the law on themselves. I'd also like to uplift the demands of the Noronho family. First, we want the sheriff to release the body cam footage unedited and unnarrated now, not in 45 days, not years later like happened with Michael McIntyre. The sheriff has illegally deleted the Noronho's personal security footage. They deserve to have it back, and I believe that they have the resources to make sure that that happens. And we also need to demand that the sheriff release the name of the officer who killed Jaime, as well as moving forward with firing and decertifying him. And lastly, we ask that you honor Donald, and Gabby, and Adrian, and Michael, and Chad, and Joseph, and Michelle, and so many others, and now newly Jaime Noronho, by doing what it takes to make sure this does not happen again. Fund a 24/7 non-police emergency system, and fund it now. Thank you.
Dawn, I just wanted to make sure that you heard the request to bring this back as an item. We understand that you guys will be passing this today, but we are requesting, along with all of these other demands, that you bring this back before a year, a month, a two months, whatever it is. Get rid of those barriers and bring it back. We would like to have a fruitful and productive community conversation, and go more into these incidences of actual use, and you have the power to do that. So please, put this as an item, not a year from now, but very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Okay, thank you to our presenters. Then we do have a couple folks in chambers that have signed up to speak to this in addition to. So I have Cardi Brannon, and then Mackenzie, or two I have signed up. Do we have folks on the phone as well?
You have at least one or two callers.
All right, very good. So Cardi? Just got to reset the clock. Just give me one second here. Okay.
I'm really grateful that this group came up and gave this presentation along with the videos, because I came here to also talk about people who have been directly impacted by the use of this military equipment, one of whom you saw in the video. His name's Danny. He's a legal observer. He was shot directly in the face, as was my friend T that same night. I was sitting at home watching live videos. I was staying home during these actions because I saw how intense they were getting, and knew that I would not be good in those spaces. And I heard my friend who was recording say they shot T, and I went, oh shit, they shot my friend? And so I have never gotten out of bed and in my vehicle and downtown so quickly as I did that night looking for my friend. And on my way downtown, I was flipping through pictures on my phone, trying to find a good picture of my friend so I could show it to people and say, have you seen my friend? Have you seen my friend? Did you see where they took them? They shot my friend in the face with three rubber bullets and a tear gas canister that was launched directly at their face from a grenade launcher. They almost died. There were multiple skull fractures and near fatal brain bleed. Totally disintegrated their draw. The gentleman that you saw in the video, he is still experiencing cognitive issues to this day as a result of his injuries. I have other friends who were lucky to escape the bullets, but experienced such significant amounts of tear gas that it caused a retinal tear, and their vision has not fully recovered despite multiple surgeries because of this. Those weapons do not keep us safe. They are used against the community, not in defense of community. And they're used against us specifically when we are out there expressing our grief because of the violence. And they just respond to it with more violence. We need this to stop. It's unconscionable to vote for this. So I demand that you do not vote this into existence.
Okay, Mackenzie?
I'm going to take my time, but I promise I will keep it. Again, at best, the excuse is laziness, and at this rate, with how many thousands of constituents that have said care, not cages, it's the willful ignorance and lack of understanding of the severity, death, and harm this county's policy and budget priorities cause. The day before this murder happened, you had an officer in here saying they would have to kill someone for having a rock or a knife if they couldn't shoot people with rubber bullets or tear gas instead. You cannot train criminalization and forced compliance away when that is what they are for, not to mention that law enforcement is here to keep us in line, follow decorum, and ensure our forced compliance into a racist system built on our ability to afford our survival and protect its private property. My friend earlier in the last comment, they said it is possible, and I want to help you envision what that could look like. Imagine a world where everyone is fed, everyone has support and food access, everyone is educated. Our communities foster a culture of love, health, and care, and that our actions reflect that, and that it means it is in the things we teach and in the things we provide. It looks like everyone housed, everyone fed, everyone healthy. It looks like violence prevention programs and investment in our youth. It looks like 24/7 neighborhood crisis response centers that navigate us through everything from losing a job, a mental health crisis, family violence. It fosters a culture of care so hard, it is supporting kids and people and their learning on how to have healthy relationships with each other in their community. And that includes the planet and the ecosystem, how to have boundaries, how to navigate conflict, and what to do in the event of harm, no matter how big or small it might be. It looks like building restorative and transformative processes for harm, some models already built, and they don't include law enforcement, or ruining somebody's life behind torturous bars. It looks like care and events that foster us and our growth and our innovation. What happened last week could have been avoided. God knows, I wouldn't have wanted someone to shoot Jaime with rubber bullets that day. I would have wanted someone to help Jaime that day. I'm envisioning a world where his health was so centered by this community, all of ours really, but so centered that he wouldn't have had to be that far into his crisis in the first place. This message is not just for you, but it's for your department heads. People are dying now, outside your jails, inside your jails, outside on the streets, dying early because they didn't have access to care, people living in poverty, people living in cycles of harms created by us not having access to learning about healthy relationships and boundaries. I know you are doing services, but you need to understand that most of it has been and will be harmful, and it does not meet the magnitude in which we need them. And being alone, and it's being done without intention, because they're not being built with us and the people who are experiencing the harms that you are causing. Everyone in this place needs to stop acting like you know how to solve the problem. And all of you need to begin to listen to this community, let us into this space, sit at your weird-ass tables, stop wasting our money on studies and consultants when you have the experts in the room with you half of the time. This is inexcusable, and experts are telling you today that your military gear policy is out of compliance with law. And half of the money spent on these items could be one of the so many parts of our $7 billion budget that can be diverted into actual preventions of harm and death, and help fund and educate the workforce that you need, and pay them a living wage to do the jobs you say you need them to do. Stop playing. Sit with your experts, and let's change and save lives. You want to know how dope this community is? I haven't even heard a single member of this fucking community tell you that they want this killer cop behind your torturous and traumatic bars. We're dreaming bigger than your system, the system that you're upholding can ever dare to be. Do better. We're already showing you how. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, do we have callers on the phone on this item?
We have, we do have at least one caller.
Okay, all right.
Jillian, can you transfer the caller? Hi caller, please mute the meeting in the background, and then if you could start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Yes, greetings, Board of Supervisors, calling in again from District One, and honestly, I mean, I can't say it better than what the previous speakers have already said, and what the family of Jaime Noronho has raised with you as well. I mean, this policy, as somebody that has spent an ample amount of time reviewing military equipment use policies at the city level, can tell you that this policy frankly is just dogshit. It is even worse than the city's policy, and the city's policy was pretty bad, and they just ignored their own city-level civilian oversight body that made several recommendations, which was including establishing independent oversight of this. You all are about to approve a policy that is even worse than that, two pages compared to the 20-plus pages that they had just on their general order. And I don't see really, I don't see any of you really taking the time to actually go through and require more of them. Like, the bare minimum you could just do is require AB 481 language to be put into the policy verbatim, which includes things like ensuring that the policy establishes clear guidelines for compliance, including legally enforceable sanctions, and independent entities or oversight bodies to make sure to ensure compliance with the policy. There's no guarantee in writing with any of that. It's all basically just taking the sheriff at their word, even though there have been multiple instances where both Sheriff Scott Jones and Captain Donnelly and under Sheriff Farnes has publicly lied to your faces, including last Tuesday. They had full access to this military equipment for years, and they could have used it for any one of the mental health crisis calls, such as Michael McIntyre or Jaime Noronho, and they fucking didn't. You know that now, but you're still, but here you are, letting them play you, negotiate in bad faith, and just wind down the clock so that you're at the point where politically it is inconvenient for you to vote no on this policy because you have a deadline, where if they don't, if this isn't approved by October 24th, you have, like, you're going to be faced with the potential political leverage that they're going to throw against you, including the Deputy Sheriff Association is going to throw at you if you vote no on it. But here's the thing, all this stuff, like, the bare minimum that you can do is establish independent oversight and add AB 481 language verbatim. You have two weeks to have them add that back in. It's copy and paste function. But I don't believe most of you are willing to do that. I think some of you are listening, but I don't think a majority of you are. And everybody knows who the two that aren't listening are really, like, are sitting there. I'm questioning whether there's a third, but we'll see. You're going to vote for this one way or another, but you have the time. There's nothing stopping you from making, from requiring additional changes, and you could, but you're not, but I don't believe that you're going to, based on the politics and the actions and the inactions that I have witnessed from this board over multiple years at a time. You let this sheriff's department walk all over you, and you give them almost a quarter of a billion dollars every year to do what exactly? Jack shit, besides doing whatever they want and making money.
Okay, Keon, I need you to conclude, please.
Yeah, I'm urging you to vote no on this policy, show the family some respect, and actually put some honest, and show some honest leadership in requiring that the sheriff actually put some real accountability in this. Don't let them skirt by on their laurels and lie to your faces like this. That just diminishes your credibility, your credibility when you're listening to a department that has and shown virtually no integrity when it comes to keeping their word.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Okay, do you have one other person in chambers?
We have another caller.
Okay, another caller, okay. I have one other person in chambers.
Can you transfer the caller? Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Sure. Good afternoon, Board. Hi, this is Nikki Jones, incarcerated, mental health first Sacramento homeless organizing committee. Yeah, so many blessings to the family of Jaime Noronho and the power to come there today and speak to you and tell you about the pain of their family and the loss of their family, the loss to the community. All blessings, all blessings to them, and to the community members there, powerfully uplifting the reality of these weapons that we give them, these officers who won't even give us a full minute before taking our lives, you know? This, you know, it's absolutely absurd to be, I mean, I hope you can feel the irony of the juxtaposition, the tragedy that is happening today. I assume that you all can. And, you know, we were told last week, we were threatened, we were fear mongered, that, you know, they would have to, they would have to do this if they didn't have these weapons. And turns out, well, they have the weapons, and guess what? This is still what they do. Maybe they just get those weapons. Maybe we take away all the actual guns, huh? If they can't figure out how to use them, if they can't figure out how to use the other ones first, maybe they have to only use those. Okay? I'm not trying to be hyperbolic. I'm not trying to be extreme. I'm saying, they're killing us with their guns, and they need to stop. So maybe they just can't have guns. If they can't figure out how to not kill us with them, maybe they can't have them. And y'all have power. You have power today. You have power every day, so much power. And the community tries to build power to even empower you more to use that, and still, forever, there is deference to the lies of the sheriff's department. There is deference to the power that they hold. And tell you what, you have a propagandizing, lying, violent, murderous gang on your hands. But you know what? You'll just let them take you out, take you out, let them show you their nice little, how they will lie to you on their propaganda trips about their equipment. I cannot believe that you all went out there, looked at all that equipment, and came back just like little children with a fire truck, just so, you know, this is neat stuff. This stuff is so neat. No, it is not neat. It maims. It kills. It blinds. It tortures. And the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department carries that out, carries out the maiming, the torturing, the violence, okay? And so what we need is for them to be in less contact with us, okay, Board? We need those violent armed people to be in less contact with us and the people that we love, our communities. We need to figure out how, all the ways, every way, every step of it, okay? From before, from the calls, from our schools, to that jail. They need, people, that is a torture box, and you have torturers running your torture box. You want to expand it? Are you kidding me? You know? Are you kidding me? Expand the torture box? Put it in charge, put these men, these men and women, these people in charge? The people who can't even figure out how to spend more than a minute, more than a minute with someone in a mental health crisis? What do you think they do to people in that jail when we can't see?
Nikki, I need you to conclude, please.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you absolutely know my final comments. Like, this is wrong. Y'all have the opportunity to do better. We really, really fucking wish you would. Cheers to folks in the room. Cheers, cheers to folks in the room.
Okay, thank you, Nikki.
That concludes the phone comments.
All right, that concludes the callers. I do have Dr. Corinne Sacco, which is to address the board on this.
Thank you, board of supervisors. Hi again, Dr. Corinne McIntosh Sacco, I'm a resident of District 2. I own a business in District 3. I serve as Chair of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board and the President of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, licensed psychologist in independent practice. And I oppose the Sacramento Sheriff's Department Military Equipment Use Policy. There's no way after being present in this room and hearing the trauma, both from those impacted, those that have been demanding y'all to do better for the past few years, there's no way you can approve this policy. My elderly uncle with dementia had his driver's license revoked because he's not fit to be behind the wheel of a car. Why would you let the Sacramento Sheriff's Department have access to these types of equipment when they've proven time and time again on the streets, in the jails, they can't use it and they cause more harm than provide for safety? The streets of Sacramento are not a battlefield. Assembly Bill 481 requires each law enforcement agency's governing body to pass this law. The bill was passed in response to years of militarized police terror targeting black and brown communities in the wake of the rampant police violence against peaceful protesters during the 2020 George Floyd uprisings. AB481 states the county board can only approve a military equipment use policy if that policy satisfies four specific requirements and the sheriff's department has not met any of these four requirements, which means it's not in compliance. For example, the sheriff's department failed to show that the military equipment will safeguard the public's welfare, civil rights, or civil liberties. The military equipment use policy, sorry, Sacramento residents and victims of police violence have repeatedly declared previously and today they feel less safe with the presence of heavily armed law enforcement and this sentiment was repeated in every single community listen session that the Sacramento Police Department held, not Sac Sheriff, but the Sacramento Police Department held listening sessions, as well as during the September 20 of Sacramento County Community Review Commission meeting. As studies also confirm, police officers' possession of military weapons have escalated situations rather than mitigated any harm, often resulting in serious preventable injuries, most notably what we saw in the video and also what happened to Jaime Naranjo. I urge you to make your decisions based on data, not scare tactics or manipulation of intellect. Ask yourself the hard questions about the Sacramento Sheriff's Department's policy when comparing it to AB481. Listen to your constituents' feedback and consider that some of the money that's used to provide the sheriff's department with weapons can be reinvested into community needs for mental health care, housing, drug treatment, health, employment, and reparations by strengthening preventative care systems that create racial and health equity. Remember, y'all declared racism a public health crisis in November 2020. By strengthening preventative care systems that create racial and health equity instead of continuing to cause harm and terror so that we can all enjoy a safe and healthy Sacramento. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Sacco. Okay, that concludes the speakers on Item 11 and again, thank all of you for your comments. So I'll bring it back to the board. We, this is still on the consent calendar. I didn't want to ask one question, well, actually two things. One of council, I think I noted the last time that there's still incorrect dates in the attachments, so I don't know if that needs to be corrected or not about when this was introduced, so.
That's on the...
On Detachment 6.
Right, no, it's on the strike through, it's not on the original, I believe.
I don't know, it's on the strike through, yeah, it's on the strike.
Right, so that's not the document that's going to be adopted, the original, I'm told.
Well, where's that? Here.
The clean version, I mean, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, there was said there was no new...
Right, so if you're looking at the clean version of the ordinance, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm looking at, it says revised, Item 11. That's what, and I'm just looking at what was attached to the front of that, so as long as that's correct for the record, I just think it needs to reflect accurately, and when we talked about last time, and I saw that on one of the previous, on the ordinance, which is fairly brief, that the dates are correct or they can fill in the blanks, but Detachment 6, which came over with the full packet, still has those dates in there of April.
The strike through ordinance, is that what you're referring to?
I am, I am.
So I agree that it's incorrect, it will not affect the ordinance at all because we're looking...
And the strike through has the additions of the who's going to review this as well.
Right, as does the...
Okay, so maybe we didn't, I don't know if that got transmitted, maybe it got transmitted electronically, but what I had was there was no new information in the board packet.
We'll make sure that that's corrected in the final version.
I do want to ask though, and this goes to a comment that I think, and I think it was referenced here today again, I think it's important, probably imperative, I think in light of what some of the things that have occurred since we last heard this a week ago, that it relates to demographic data. I think that's important for this board going forward to have. I know there was some discussion about that, but I think it's within the purview of this board to ask that as this matter comes forward and certainly can come forward much earlier than a year from now, that we have that demographic data. I think it's important to know and I think in light of obviously, you know, again, some of the testimony we've heard today, so, and I guess I would turn to you because that's not in the ordinance provisions. I understand that will have some costs and time associated with it, but I think it's important for this board going forward to have that available as a part of the military use policy and I can...
I know that the sheriff did say that they were working towards having that and we will work closely with them to move towards that direction.
Okay, so, but I don't know, it was not, and I guess maybe turning to Lisa, but it's not embedded in policy approval, it's not even, it's just that we had commentary and that's my reference. I know there was a response that said they could, could and we're going to do that. I just think it needs to be part of the direction. Again, I will not be a part of this board when this probably next comes back, but I think having that going forward is important and my colleagues can weigh in if they choose to, but how would we make sure that that gets included, Lisa? By reference of, this is a consent item, so it wouldn't attach to the ordinance, but by way of direction and I appreciate people's verbal commitment to that, but it's just that, so.
Right, so as far as, there's multiple ways that that could be accomplished at this point. If you wanted it in the ordinance, it would have to be reintroduced.
Right, and we have the deadline, I get that.
We have a deadline. You could, let me just look at the, we have a resolution, we could add it to the resolution today. We could add whatever language the board wants to include and that would be a legislative decision that would, you know, provide a record and direction.
Okay. So we could do that, and where would we add that in the resolution if that were the case?
I would add a number five, I think.
Okay, so on page two?
Yes, page two, number five, and we could work on whatever language.
Whatever language, provide the direction, but we could do that.
Correct, and then we would just update that and then when the clerk authorizes or certifies the resolution, that would be included.
Okay. Again, I don't know, again, if there's other people who are considering that, but I would offer that as amendment to the resolutions before us that we include that the demographic data collection be stipulated as a part of going forward with the authorization of the use of the equipment and so forth and that that, you know, this is an annual report and discussion with the community and with the board and so unless there's objections, I would offer that as a amendment to the resolutions before.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just point of order here. Are we taking up Item 11 separately from the rest of consent?
It was still on the consent calendar.
No, I understand, but are we taking up Item 11 separate from the balance of consent?
We could if the board chose to, I just was going to offer that as a...
Okay, I think it would be cleaner to do that.
Okay, all right, so we can go ahead and call Item 11. We did already call...
Already called that, yeah, you're on that item.
So we can take it up separately.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right, all right.
Was that a motion?
I was offering the language first and then we can certainly consider a motion on the remaining portion of it, so if there's no objections, I guess we can roll that into the, to a motion.
Could you, and could you just reiterate what language it is that you would like to have included?
Okay. Without getting into legalese, I would just, I think it'd be stipulated as a part of the annual report and requirements under 481 and subsequent legislation to come before this board that we actually have as a part of that report, demographic data relative to the use of the equipment, because there's going to report annually on the use of that equipment and so Lisa, how would you?
Yep.
That's simply what I'm suggesting we add, so.
I just typed what you wrote.
Verbally noted, okay. All right, yes, sure, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I absolutely agreeable with that. I had a question, maybe for Mr. Jones. I believe the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, I mean, it already includes requirements for reporting a lot of this demographic data. I'm curious, does it, does AB 953 also parse it out? So it clearly, I mean, it clearly obviously identifies demographic data in relation to a use of force incident, but does it break it down in a sufficient way to really capture incidents involving this type of equipment? Do you know?
Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive Public Safety and Justice Agency, it does not, but we will work with the sheriff's office in ensuring that at the annual report, we do parse out that information.
And I would certainly support, I don't know if Supervisor Ross made a motion, I'd second it with the language that the chair related.
Oh, okay. So one last thing, and I would offer, I will offer a motion, but is that as noted, this is not required to come back at any set date, it has to be done in the calendar year and I think I suggested even at the last hearing that there'd be some normalization as related to when this would come forward and that it wouldn't be up against the deadline, so there'd be opportunity for Community Review Commission, this board, sheriff's department, and certainly the community to engage on, you know, conversation going forward. This can, but I do think it's important that it be done early enough in the, in the year to allow for gathering the information that would be, that would occur in the year prior, but also plenty of time in advance and so I guess Lisa, I would just turn to you, so would it be practical to say that by, you know, first quarter or by second quarter of every year, and maybe even prior to budget, I think I said that last time, we talked about this, I think that's important, that we, you know, embed that maybe in the resolution as well, so that there'd be some, you know, that would be in the second quarter of each calendar year that this policy would be reviewed and before the community by the county and so forth?
That is, you can do that as well.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm going to just offer that to my colleagues, I think again, I won't be here second quarter of next year, but, but I think it's important. I think, again, I think give enough time for folks to do, enough time to gather the information to assimilate that, but also, so Eric, I would just turn to you, is that, do you think it's sufficient time to, or Ann, either one?
Yes, to report on the data available at that time, so if I may for clarification, you're thinking end of second quarter?
Within the second quarter, that, you know, yeah.
Is that second quarter of the calendar year?
Calendar year, that's what I said, yeah, second quarter, calendar year. So I wouldn't specify a month, I mean, could do that, but I would, I would offer that. Any objections to that? Okay, all right, so I'm going to offer that, so you put a number six in there in the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and with that then, certainly recognizing the testimony we've heard, but I think action that we need to take or certainly being asked to take, I would offer a motion to approve the consent calendar in the resolution, consent item 11 with those two additions. That's my motion. Yeah, I'm sorry, Supervisor Kennedy, I'm sorry.
And just one more thing, I don't think that this requires any word changes or anything like that, but should it go forward? I believe there was direction last time that the inspector general and the Community Review Commission have an opportunity to participate in this.
And that's included in the ordinance?
That's included in the...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it's perfectly clear. Thank you.
Okay, all right, that's my motion. Okay, nothing further, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Kennedy voting no.
Okay, all right, thank you all, we have the balance of the consent calendar, could I have a motion on the balance of the consent? Okay, moving a second to approve the balance of the consent calendar if there's nothing further. Have we taken public comments on?
No.
The balance, is there any?
No.
No one signed, no one, okay, and I have no one signed to speak on any other item on the consent calendar. All right, Ann?
After you vote.
Okay, all right, all right, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present and let the record reflect that Items 7 and 11 have separate votes.
Okay, very good, okay, Ann.
So just in terms of time management, I might suggest that we do the next two resolutions and then take a break for closed session, which we can certainly eliminate one of the closed session items and then come back after that for the rest of the calendar.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that's exactly what I was thinking as well, so we do have some presentations and again, we're going to take those, presentations of those resolutions and then we will break into closed session and so with apologies to folks that may have been here for a while and some of the items that were still on the morning calendar as timed items and we'll return after we have closed session. Okay, so with that, let's go to the next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 27 is the presentation of resolution congratulating Dave Tamayo upon the occasion of his retirement.
Okay, I'm inviting David coming up and Michael, you're going to handle this first, so go ahead.
Michael Peterson, Director of Water Resources, really happy to be here to finally be able to recognize Dave for not only his 30-year career with the county, but also his retirement. I'll just touch briefly on it because I know a lot of it's carried in the resolution. Dave, in 1989, he moved here from the Bay Area to pursue an environmental career. He was a cook, a wholesale seafood business owner, commercial fisherman, electrician, and a whitewater rafting guide. His initial job with the county was with the Water Quality Department as an Assistant Industrial Waste Inspector, the first one for the county, and then was promoted to an Industrial Waste Inspector the next year. After three years, he moved to Water Resources and worked on the many aspects of, at the time, the fledging Stormwater Quality Program that was, that we were getting off the ground. He was instrumental in getting that going, dealing with stormwater quality, industrial illegal discharge, public outreach, monitoring, and targeting pollutant elements. He wrote the county's Stormwater Quality, the Stormwater Ordinance, created the first project for cost sharing with the other agencies in the Stormwater Partnership, led the development of the county's integrated pest management policy, and helped establish numerous programs to identify and mitigate top priority pollutants and pesticides underwater race. He's a founding member of the River Friendly Landscaping Coalition. He's served on many boards and commissions, including the California Structural Pest Control Board, Sacramento Yelled Mosquito and Vector Control District, California Stormwater Quality Association, and he currently serves as an elected member on the smud board. Also during his career, he managed to find the time to complete a master's degree in entomology and nematology from the University of Florida. He's a recognized expert in the areas of river and water quality, pest management, and pesticide use, and he's, and he's served as an advisory committee member for many bodies. For most of his career, he's been a key leader in driving, in a driving force in CASCAS efforts to influence state and federal pesticide management policies. Despite, you know, nothing beyond that, just that he's been absolutely integral getting the county stormwater program going, keeping us in line, and that was back when it was pretty new and a lot of uncertainty behind it, so always been absolutely committed, just great personal interest in what he was doing here at the county. Thank you so much for dedicating yourself at the county to water resources and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Geller.
A second, I'm going to make your comments here. Well, thanks, Michael, and I think Michael did capture a lot of, in a very condensed portion format, you know, Dave's career with the county of Sacramento, but, you know, 30 years and many hours devoted to obviously tasks that are very important to, you know, the health and sanitation of this, and certainly compliance, but beyond that, obviously best practices and so. I know, Dave, I've had the chance to know and work with you and certainly considered you a friend for many, many years and every once in a while we get a, you know, a chance to chat in the lobby about something going on in the community, but there was never a question, and I don't think any of us who have known Dave for any time at all, about his dedication certainly to the role and the professional assignments he had here at the county, but also obviously his broader community interest and as Michael Peterson noted, and we know this, obviously Dave's served on the smud board for a number of years and certainly been a leader in that respect and again, he really, throughout his professional life and career and certainly in his day-to-day commitments, you know, is a strong part of the fabric of this community and I want to thank him for his good work... And I want to thank him for his good work. This board resolution was approved a few weeks ago, and we just had to get it scheduled, and I know that you were gonna have a big party. In fact, I was looking for the party. Since I don't, not very good on getting emails on the weekend, or text messages, because of the pandemic, and I guess. COVID exposure, I went looking, and there was no cake, and there was no party, and there was no Dave, but at any rate, we still celebrate that day, and I know that hopefully, you had a lot of cake to eat, I guess, you and the family, right? Yeah?
Yeah. Well, actually, I donated the cake to, to a couple of community events, so a friend of mine who works for Valley Vision was running around Oak Park, sharing my, my retirement cake with the.
Was that the first, was that the first canceled retirement party, or the second one, Dave?
So, but all the best laid plans, but again, it takes nothing away from his career, and certainly in celebrating all the work that you've done, but also wishing you and your family, Dave, you know, a lot of good things, certainly good health, happiness, and many blessings. You've been a blessing to this community in many ways, your dedication and commitment, and we want to return that to you, and this resolution, you know, covers a lot of your career, but what comes behind it is best wishes to you, and, and thanking you with gratitude for all your work with the county of Sacramento, so many years, and making this a better place to live for all of us. Congratulations. And then I'm gonna let you make some comments. Right there, oh. Watch out, hurry.
Where should we be? Over there?
You wanna, you wanna get in front? Oh, you, you can invite board members?
Whatever works.
Right here?
Sure.
Thanks, good, okay, but it's all yours.
Chair Natoli and the rest of the members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you very much for taking the time to, just to recognize the, you know, my contribution to the county. Actually feel really fortunate that I moved to Sacramento probably about 35 years ago, well, no, 33 years ago, I moved to Sacramento, looking to change careers and to, to work in the environmental field. I, you know, have a degree in, in science, and I, you know, I remember drilling holes through walls to pull wires, and thinking, it's a good job, but I want to contribute, you know, my, through my life, in a different way. And I moved here initially thinking I was gonna get a job with the state, and I applied with lots and lots of state agencies. Fortunately, they turned me down, and I got hired by the county before the state could scoop me up. And having worked for the county, and actually, it was mentioned that I have done a lot of work to try and influence state and federal policy, I'm really glad that I, that I ended up with the county, because my job with the county and my career in the county management allowed me to contribute to a lot of changes that if I was working for the state, I, I wouldn't have been able to make those sorts of changes. So, thank goodness that I landed in the right place, and, and was supported by my immediate supervisors and by county management, and, and doing some things that really benefited the county and our ability to improve water quality. And then also, just having worked with the, the state being on the other side, and, and seeing how hidebound they are, I know that you think that we've got a bureaucracy here in Sacramento County, but you also know that, boy, working with the state and feds, now that's a real bureaucracy. So, so I was able to get some things done, because I was fortunate enough to be hired by the county. I do want to give some, some shout-outs to particular individuals. First of all, to my fiance, Orion Lyons, who's, you know, been supportive with me for many years, and, you know, actually indulgent in, in, you know, putting in some extra hours here and there with the county, and then sometimes I would have to take time off during the day to do SMUDD stuff or other community stuff, and then be doing county stuff on the weekends and all that. So, thank you very much for, for your love and your support, and, and helping contribute to my ability to, to have a successful career. Means all the world. The, the two people that interviewed me for my very first job, Cheryl Creason, whom I'm sure a number of you know personally, and who has very unsuccessfully retired, she's still working for the city of Citrus Heights, and she's worked for other, other agencies, but, and then Glenn Del Sardo, both of them really helped me throughout my career, both in that initial job, but also being sounding boards for, hey, I'm running into this type of problem, what, what can I do about it? I've, I've got a few other people I want to make sure that I mention. Cecilia Jensen, who retired at the end of last year, made a huge difference in, in my, what my possibilities were with the county, and I really owe her, her, her sort of changed how the stormwater program operated, and, and saw how it, instead of just being, oh, let's check the boxes, it's like, how can we be a really good program that sort of leads the way? Carrie Schmitz, who still is a, a, a key person in the water, Department of Water Resources, although she's moved over to the kind of wimpier side of clean, actual clean water that you can drink, but she made a, a really big difference in supporting my ability to, to work in the field of pesticides, and really have the county support some really incredible changes that have occurred. Dana Booth, who also recently retired, was very, was really supportive of my ability to continue to do that kind of work, and a lot of fun to work with. And then his, his successor, Ken Ballard, who I think is in the room, who's, who was my final boss at the county. He was actually, I hired him as a student, I think in 1999 or something like that, and my gosh, he's, he's done so much to contribute to the county since then, all on his own energy, but I fortunately made the good decision to hire Ken, and he was a great boss. When I left, I don't know how he's doing right now, I haven't heard too many complaints from, from my former colleagues at, or from, from Michael Peterson, so he's still working here, so I guess he's doing all right. And then my colleagues who are still with the stormwater program, there are many other people I worked with over the years, who, who really contributed, not just the, those eight hours a day, but really their, their time and their energy and their focus, and really sort of love for what we are trying to do to improve water quality, and to do it intelligently. So Sean Daniluk, Jeanette Huddleston, Archie Wright, Don Pimentel, and Hope Taylor is very new to the team, but as, as Orion said, it took somebody with a PhD to take my place. So, they're all doing great, great work.
You're so humble.
I did want to share, and, and they're showing that they really, they don't need me anymore, so they're doing a great job. That, that is a picture, I think it's probably in my second year, so not quite sure, I know for sure that that's me, doesn't really look like me anymore, because it's, that person has hair and looks, looks, looks a lot younger. This is actually some impromptu sampling equipment to see what kinds of weird stuff they're putting into the sewer at Folsom Prison, so.
That's otherwise known as a fruit basket, isn't it?
Pardon me?
That you have in your hand there? It's like a fruit basket or something.
It was just some, like, chicken wire around a, a, probably a coat hanger or something like that, so I guess that's what I had available to me at the time, but.
And that photo was only taken two years ago.
It revealed some weird things that were coming into the sewer system from, from, from Folsom Prison. Well, I, I know you've had a long day so far, but just, just, I'm gonna conclude this by saying, it was a great career, I really appreciate the opportunity. I, it, it, really, being an environmental scientist for the county of Sacramento, kind of, it, it wasn't just a job, it was who I was. I'm still doing a bunch of things, like advisory committees, and some things that still support the county, there's sort of holdovers, so one of them's a, a, a two-year appointment to an EPA advisory committee, and, and I'm still very much believe in what the county is doing. So appreciative, and thank you very much for taking the time to allow me to, to, you know, to celebrate, but also express my thanks to the county and to all, all the great people that I've, that I've worked with over the years, and, and also for the tuition reimbursement that helped me get my master's degree in entomology, so now, you know, now I can say I'm a bug man, so I get lots of gifts, entomology-themed gifts, so. As far as my retirement party, because of the trouble of everything associated with my retirement, where I attempted to celebrate, has been kind of messed up, I'm gonna have a party next year, but I am not gonna call it a retirement party, so it has a much better chance of actually occurring, and you will all be invited, so. So, once again, thank you very much. And, and finally, this is a separate issue, and I know you heard a lot about it, I know you really care about it, you know that I live in the Fruit Ridge area, I, I can't leave the, after this morning's testimony, I can't leave the podium without saying his name, Jaime Noronjo, and thank you for your focus, and your, and I'm thanking you for continuing to focus on this and provide the resources that are necessary to fix that problem, so I, I believe you can, and certainly, I know that you, I know that you, you know that we, we must solve that problem, so, anyway, thank you, and have a great rest of the day.
Thanks, David.
Thanks, Dave.
Got some comments?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So, Dave, we got stormwater, entomology, energy policy, prison sewers, mosquito and vector control, I think that might have been forgotten, pesticides. You, sir, are one big nerd. But I'm glad you are, because you focused on things that really make our community better. I've known Dave a long time, I mean, before, when we were neighborhood activists, when we both had hair, you know, when our kids went to LDV together, so I've, I've had the pleasure of being a friend of Dave's for, for a very long time, but I've also had the last eight years to watch you at the county, and see that, you know, as quiet as we all know Dave is, sure, he can go on a while, but he's quiet. You know, when he walks down the hall, he's revered as being an expert in all of these areas, and so it's a big hole to fill at the county, and I know your dedication to the county. You gave me a little bit of a, of a lecture on what it's gonna be like eight years ago, and, you know, you clearly showed me that you've been dedicated to this county for a very long time, so people of Sacramento County are better off because of the work you've done. Thank you. And for the next party next year, Orion, why don't you have him call it a wedding reception?
No pressure.
No pressure. Any other comments, more members? If not, David, thank you so much, congratulations to you, you, you have been a tremendous asset, and wish you well on everything you continue to do for our community, so, and thanks for staying with us this morning, too, so.
Well, great, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, David.
Okay, we have one more presentation before we go to closed session, so.
So, item 28 is the presentation of resolution in recognition of the 25th anniversary of the Neil Reitman Pediatric Burn Institute, the 100th anniversary of Shriners Children's, and the 150th anniversary of the Shriners International Fraternity.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make my way down to the podium.
Sure, okay, Mr. Chair, and our guests, if they can introduce themselves, and I've been very patient, I know you had others with you this morning, so appreciate your, your being with us today, and, again, Mr. Serna's gonna do the honors here.
Good afternoon, my name is Kelsey Morgato, I'm the Director of Marketing and Communications for Shriners Children's Northern California. I have the distinct pleasure and honor of being able to serve our patient families at Shriners Children's Northern California every single day. This is a monumental year for our organization, you may have been referring to us previously as Shriners Hospitals for Children. We've recently rebranded and changed our name to Shriners Children's Northern California to demonstrate we're reaching more children in more places, more so than ever before. This is a huge year for us as well, because we're celebrating three significant milestones, the 25, the 25th anniversary of our facility, and Neil Reitman Pediatric Burn Institute, the 100th anniversary of Shriners Children's Organization, and the 150th anniversary of Shriners International Fraternity. This is the organization of men that came together, that founded an organization that they could call their own, Shriners Children's Hospital. This is also an opportunity, while we're receiving this recognition today, to personally invite all of you to Shriners Children's Northern California to learn about the new programs and services that we offer at our facility, because we serve hundreds of patients and patient families from each of your districts, and I would love the opportunity to give you a tour and show you the new programs and services that we offer at our facility. So, this recognition today is such an amazing support for our hospital, and I just thank all of you for your continued support of Shriners Children's Northern California.
Great, thank you. And if your photographer want to take pictures, you can come down here in the well, too, if she'd like to, it helps with your picture.
Once the supervisor has a chance to say a few words.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, 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 I meant, she want photos of you talking with her, yeah, yeah.
No, Mr. Chair and members of the board, it's my distinct pleasure to stand before you today, and to our audience here in chambers, and those that may be viewing from home, to make a rightful acknowledgement of one of our community's dear assets as it relates to public health, but certainly with some specificity towards healthcare for children that are in families that are facing massive health challenges, whether it be burns, whether it's spina bifida, whether it's other spinal cord injuries. I think we know that Shriners has been a fixture here, as Kelsey mentioned, for over 100 years, and it's, again, I think, very rightful that as the supervisor in whose district the Shriners Hospital is located, that we take the time to honor the great work of the men and women of, as Kelsey mentioned, which is now Shriners Children's Northern California. I'd just like to maybe make a few notations here about some of the, the nature of the good work that Shriners does. For example, Shriners Children's Northern California receives over 6,500 referrals a year, and has treated more than 85,000 patients. Today, Shriners Children's continues to serve patients and their families regardless of a family's ability to pay, or regardless of their insurance status. I also note that many of the people, the health professionals at Shriners are our constituents. They live right here, and work and play right here in Sacramento County. And since 1922, Shriners Children has saved the lives of more than 1.5 million children, and of course, we are taking this time to recognize and appreciate and honor everything that Shriners Children's Northern California has done for Sacramento children and their families. So, with that, I'm very honored to present this resolution, celebrating the 25th anniversary of the Neil Reitman Pediatric Burn Institute, 100th anniversary of Shriners Children's, and the 150th anniversary of the Shriners International Fraternity, to Kelsey, on behalf of the organization. Thank you. Now. Thanks for your patience, too.
Kelsey, I would just say before you leave, that I, I was there for the dedication, I was, it was early in my first term on the Board of Supervisors, but I remember certainly how spectacularly it was received, not only the work would go on there, but obviously the various compliments for, as Supervisor Serna noted, for, you know, children and their families, and the accommodations provided, but the treatment and restorative surgeries and so forth, and it's just a lifesaving, as Phil said, and I know I've had a chance on occasion, a couple times over the course of 25 years, to visit the Burn Institute, but also to see different aspects, but I think it's, it's great for colleagues that may not have been there any time recent, to know, again, the fabulous lifesaving, life-changing work that goes on, and how the Shriners organization raises the money to do that and provide that full complement of, you know, basically gathering the family in the arms, and then, you know, going through some of the extensive treatments that some of the young people have to go through. through in order to get, get well and get better. Again, I just want to compliment you and certainly it's embodied in the resolution. Mr. Serna said it very well. But I, I know that we're, we are very, very blessed for, certainly Northern California is, but certainly have that, the hospital located right here in Sacramento County and certainly the reach that goes far beyond our, our county borders. But thanks again to the men and women who, again, so ably serve young people who can look back on their lives and know that, you know, their life was saved and/or is so much better because of the work that Shriners sponsored and offered to them and, and at the hospital. So.
Thank you for your kind words and thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Okay. A round of applause, I think, for you. So, yeah, yeah. All right. Very good. Okay. With that then, we're going to recess to close session. And again, apologies to folks that were maybe been here for some of the 10:30 items, 10:15. But we will return this afternoon to complete the morning items. I imagine we're going to be, Anne, you think about an hour, 2:15?
That might allow for a little bit of food.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Between the.
2:15.
2:15. So we'll return here at 2:15. So, all right.
Sir, we're going right into close.
Yeah, go right into close session. Yeah. Good afternoon. Wanted to call back into open session Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting from October 4th, 2022. Thank folks for their patience. I know the morning went a bit long, so we had some items carried over to this afternoon. Before we get started, we need to call a roll, reestablish a quorum. Hello, turn to you.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. Great. All right. We're going to go back to our morning items and then we'll pick up with the afternoon portion. So.
Okay. So at this time, you're going to be acting as a Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation. And I'm going to bring up the Zoom screen. We have a couple of folks who are participating via Zoom.
Great.
And I do want to go on record that you did lose your fifth board member for this item. So you do, a quorum is still established, but she was scheduled for the morning and so she had a conflict.
Okay. Well, we want to thank her for serving. She was available, she was part of the committee this morning where she, so she did. And so we thank her for her willingness to serve. And again, apologies for not being able to accommodate her schedule. So, all right. With that, turn to Mr. Betis. Colin.
Good afternoon, Board of Directors of the Tobacco Securitization Corporation, Colin Betis, the County Debt Officer. For this item today, there are three action items before you as the Directors of the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation. The first one being the approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, which was held on October 5th, 2021, adoption of the fiscal year 2223 budget and a receive and file for the fiscal year 2122 audited financial report. For the budget, there is a minor reduction in the requested budget from the prior year of approximately of $2,000. We anticipate an increase in insurance costs, an increase in contingency and a reduction in treasury trustee services. The audited financial information is a receive and file item and it was determined in the opinion of the auditors to be presented fairly in all material respects. Kathleen Foster from MGO is also available to address any questions you may have related to the audit, audit, and I am here to answer any questions you may have for the staff report before you. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Betis. Do we have any questions for Colin or for the other folks that are available? All right. If not, I don't have anybody signed to speak. Do we have any folks on the phone that?
Do not have any calls.
All right. So we do have a staff recommendation. Do we have a, unless there's any comments, a motion on this?
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve the staff recommendation as outlined in Mr. Betis' report and in the written staff report. If there's nothing further than I'll call for the vote.
Unanimous vote. And while Ms. Williams is not showing on this screen, let the record reflect that she was absent and.
I would just note too, on the letter, on the letterhead, it still shows, is it Nathan Fletcher as being on, a director? Is that's right? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Correct. He is. Okay.
Yeah, he is.
All right. All right. Very good. Okay. With that, let's go to next item.
Okay. So bear with me. I've got to read all these properties into the record. Item number 30, this is resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property for the Arden Way Complete Streets Project for.
I just declare every property on Arden Way, just about.
Yeah, we're like 20 properties deep.
I know. Go ahead.
Okay. Bank of America National Trust and Savings Association and National Bank Association located at 3101 Arden Way. Gejorian Associates, a California Limited Partnership located at 3119 Arden Way. Gejorian Enterprises LP, a California Limited Partnership at 3129 Arden Way. Gejorian Enterprises LP, a California Limited Partnership at 3145 Arden Way. BCB Properties Incorporated, a California Corporation, as to an undivided 92.425% interest and Herb Liveritt Companies Incorporated, a California Corporation, as to an undivided 7.575% interest as tenants in common, located at 3333 Arden Way. Sacramento District Advisory Board, Church of the Nazarene, a California Corporation, at 3337 Arden Way. Confucius Church of Sacramento, a Corporation, at 3341 Arden Way. Digital Wireless Incorporated, a California Corporation. 3343 through 3349 Arden Way. Willetland Company, a California Corporation. 3355 Arden Way. Willetland Company, a California Corporation. 3409 Arden Way. Willetland Company, a California Corporation. Zero Arden Way. Willetland Company, a California Corporation. 3433 Arden Way. Willetland Company, a California Corporation. 33, excuse me, 3441 Arden Way. Arden and Watt LLC, a California Limited Liability Company. 1649 Watt Avenue. SEL Investments LLC, a California Limited Liability Company. 3420 Arden Way. The Realty Associates Fund 11 Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership located at 3412 Arden Way. Realty Associates Fund 11 Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership. 3338 Arden Way. The Realty Associates Fund 11 Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership. 3308 Arden Way. Kaiser Foundation Hospitals, a California nonprofit public benefit corporation. 3210 Arden Way. And then there's Jaswinder Singh Rye as trustee of the Rye Living Trust dated March 30th, 2017, as to an undivided 50% interest and Harinder Singh, a married man as sole and separate property, as to an undivided 50% interest located at 3100 Arden Way. And that concludes the properties.
Very good. Flo, got through that? Okay. All right. With that then, we'll go to our presenter, Peter.
Yes, Chairman. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager with the Acquisition Section, Real Estate Division. And I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends approval for 17 resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interests for the Department of Transportation's Arden Way Complete Streets Project. Before I begin my presentation, there have been some recent developments with three owners on this property and that are subject to the hearings today. I'd like to drop the following three owners. Number five, BCB Properties, Inc., a California Corporation, as to an undivided 92.425% interest and Herb Liveritt Companies, Inc. and California Corporation, as to an undivided 7.575 interest as tenants in common located at 3333 Arden Way. That's number one. Second dismissal would be number six, Sacramento District Advisory Board, Church of the Nazarene, a California Corporation, located at 3337 Arden Way. Lastly, number 20, Jaswinder Singh Rye as trustee of the Rye Living Trust dated March 30th, 2017, as to an undivided 50% interest and Harinder Singh, a married man as his sole and separate property, as to an undivided 50% interest located at 3100 Arden Way. In all three of the situations with these owners, the owners have provided the necessary signed acquisition documents to the Real Estate Division. Therefore, I would ask the, the board to make a motion to drop all three of the aforementioned resolutions. Going further, I would note that the Rye Living Trust property at 3100 Arden Way, we have negotiated a settlement due to the level of compensation exceeding DGS Director's authority, a delegated authority under County Code 2.61.020. This signed agreement will require your board's approval. Real Estate Division has scheduled the necessary consent item on the November 8th, 2022 Board of Supervisors Agenda. The purpose of the project is to provide complete street improvements, including pavement overlays, class four bike lanes, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, sidewalk ramps, streetlights, landscape medians and traffic signal modifications. Of the 23 necessary acquisitions required for this project, 17 are the subject of this board item. I would like to ask Madam Clerk if I may display attachment tree, attachment three to this round hearing. I have it. Thank you. So each of the 17 easements and owners I'll go through real quick and describe the types of easements, interests that we're looking to acquire, the county's looking to acquire. And then the sizes of those are listed on the attachment here, which is being displayed. First item, Bank of American National Trust and Savings Association, National Banking Association, located at 3100 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the property. Number two, Gejorian Associates, California Limited Partnership, located at 3119 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities and easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the property. Item number three, Gejorian Enterprises LP, California Limited Partnership, located at 3129 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities and an easement for public utilities and public facilities. Lastly, a temporary construction easement across a portion of the property. Number four, Gejorian Enterprises LP, California Limited Partnership, located at 3145 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the property. Number five, again, I would like to drop this resolution, BCB Properties Incorporated. Also, number six, Sacramento District Advisory Board, Church of the Nazarene. I would like to drop that one from the proceedings. Number seven, Confucius Church of Sacramento, a Corporation, located at 3341 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the property. Okay. Number eight, Digital Wireless, a California Corporation, located at 3343 to 3349 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement for the project across the portion of the property. Number nine, Willetland Company, a California Corporation, located at 3355 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the property. Number 10, again, Willetland Company, a California Corporation, located at 3409 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and an easement for temporary construction needed across a portion of the property. Okay, continuing. Number 11, Willetland Company, a California Corporation, located at Zero Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public facilities and an easement for public utilities and public facilities. Lastly, a temporary construction easement needed across a portion of the property. 12, Willetland Company, a California Corporation, located at 3433 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities and easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement. Number 13, Willetland Company, a California Corporation, located at 3441 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire is an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the property. Number 14, Arden and Watt LLC, a California Limited Liability Company, located at 1649 Watt Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire is an easement for public roadway and public utilities and easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement. Number 15, SEL Investments LLC, a California Limited Liability Company, located at 3420 Arden Way. The real property interests the county seeks to acquire are a easement for public roadway and public utilities and easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement. Item 16, the Realty Associates Fund 11, Portfolio LP, Delaware Limited Partnership, located at 3412 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement across a portion of the affected property. 17, the Realty Associates Fund 11, Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, located at 3338 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement. Number 18, the Realty Associates Fund 11, Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, located at 3308 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. Number 19, Kaiser Foundation Hospitals, California nonprofit public benefit corporation, located at 3210 Arden Way. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. Lastly, again, one of the ones we are dropping, Jaswinder Singh Rye as trustee of the Rye Living Trust. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of temporary construction easement. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. That's not supposed to be said. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for purchase of the various easement interests I just mentioned and that are displayed on attachment three. The county negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary easement interests in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's resolutions of necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the required real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the statutory, the required statutory resolution necessity findings is contained within the staff report and included with the agenda packet along with owner contact histories. Notice of intention to seek approval of the resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard U.S. mail at least 15 days before today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or if any of the, or any of the properties in question, I or other project team members here present are available to address those for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. That was a lot to go through. Thank you for that. I wanted to ask, we got correspondence dated yesterday.
Yes.
From Realty Associates. It wasn't addressed in your report. Maybe you intended to address that. But they, one thing in particular that I, that I called out from the letter beyond some of the procedural things that obviously counsel could address, or you, had to do with approaching a tenant property owner all along and us not acknowledging.
That, that's correct. We, the, the Real Estate Division made an error in sending that to the tenant. The tenant McDonald's had, we, we've been working with McDonald's on another project on Watt Avenue. They have a representative for this region. We sent the, the offer to them to help facilitate contact between the owner and ourselves and that was not correct. So.
So did we meet statutory guidelines for notice? Because if we were working directly with a party who obviously would be affected since they had. they have the business there, but they're not the property owners who we have to negotiate for access or easements or any other acquisition that would be a part of this, but we didn't -- they referenced that as recently as almost just a little more than a month ago, September 1st, that we still hadn't acknowledged that, so are we -- did we take this back?
We received a similar letter in real estate on September 1st, as I think the person is alluding to. And we discussed that internally. We provided the owner with the offer as they required. Yesterday, I in fact spoke to the attorney representing the owner. We had a telephone conversation yesterday, and was presented the letter, I think that you're looking at, October 3rd, just moments ago. I have not been in my office this morning waiting for this resolution necessity hearing, so I likely have that correspondence sitting in my desk.
So are you still proposing to take action on that particular parcel, though? Because as I heard you read through, you didn't call this one out, so.
Yes, that is correct. We would ask the board to issue a resolution on this, while we continue to engage in good faith with the property owner.
So let me ask this, because again, it's only took this as their explanation, but I wanted to be sure for the record that you -- because you just said you spoke with their attorney, he's an author and/or partner to the firm that sent this letter. But they referenced that they sent the letter September 1st and that the county failed to even respond, and that, you know, basically they characterized that we were ignoring them, you know, and that was as of the writing. Now, the conversation you had occurred yesterday, this letter obviously is prepared probably the day before or whatever. You said you were talking internally. Had we gone out and responded to Realty Associates after this, in between today's hearing or in between yesterday and September 1st, or did we not do that?
Yes, there was reach outs to the owner regarding the letter, and we just have not -- pardon, part of the letter, the September 1 letter, was talking about the manner in which the appraisal occurred, and they had some issue with that.
Sure. And again, those are the types of things, but again, I just wanted to be sure we, you know, because you're going to adhere to that. They have the right to get a secondary appraisal or, you know, and to go through the criteria and negotiate with you and others on that. I just, again, I was concerned that we had taken an approach where we always identify who the property owners are and that we were dealing with McDonald's, national firm, and yet we, you know, these folks, you know, didn't write to us the day before the hearing and say, you know, they feel like they, you know, have been left out.
Yeah, we're engaged with the owners. We're aware of their issues, and we're working towards resolution, you know, through continued negotiations likely.
Okay. All right. Members of the board, do we have any questions from board members at this juncture? Peter went through it pretty extensively, and there's a lot of pertinent information behind that. All right, let me see. I don't have it. Do we have anybody in chambers? I don't have anybody signed up. Anybody on item 30? Oh, we do. Okay, we do. So Lydia's bringing up -- and do we have somebody on the phone?
We do not have any phone calls.
Okay, all right, so.
I am on Zoom, appearing for item 30.
Okay.
Right. I don't believe you're a public comment. He's asking about public comments.
Thank you.
Who's that?
Give me a minute, and I'll figure it out.
Okay.
I'm the attorney representing the Realty Associates Fund.
Oh, then she is a public comment, yeah. Okay. All right, we'll call you in just a minute. We're going to take the ladies in chambers, and then we'll get to you on the Zoom call in just a moment, so. All right, so first, I'm going to call Lily Shiong. Lily?
Hello.
Good afternoon. Hi, Lily.
I represent Digital Wireless for 3343 Arden Way.
Okay. You said 3344?
3343, 3345, 3347, and 3349.
Okay, got it. Okay.
I guess my goal here is just to see if there's any way to delay the process because we're a bit late to get started in touch with the county, to get into figuring the offer proposal of purchasing part of our property for the Arden Bike Lane project. And I think we just got that resolution of notice letter like two weeks ago, and if there's any chance that we can just delay it and work together, that would be great, so appreciate your time.
Very good. Well, thank you, Lily, and maybe get one of Peter's cards before you leave.
Yeah, we're working together already.
Okay, very good. Okay. Thank you. And just by way of information, Ms. Shiong, that we, even if we act on the resolutions today, there's plenty of opportunity to negotiate, obviously, price determination and certainly any aspects of access to the property or impacts to landscaping or parking. All that is still certainly open to discussion. This doesn't finalize any of those actions and certainly doesn't put us in a position of being adversarial, in fact, probably to the contrary, although it could only lead to, if we can't find agreement to, with the resolutions in place, to actually going to the Superior Court and seeking to get, you know, the access to the area or easement, but that's, you know, kind of the last resort. So just, again, as you're coming into the process, again, make sure you stay in touch with our folks and hopefully can, you know, find equitable and agreeable resolution to your, to the matter. Thanks. Okay, so we have a caller on the phone, so if you'll just give us your name, and we do have the correspondence as noted a moment ago, and we can see you on the screen.
Great. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Nazan Tomorian. I represent the Realty Associates Fund. The board is considering adopting resolutions of necessity this afternoon to condemn various acquisitions from the property owned by the Realty Associates. We submitted an objection letter yesterday that details the various defects in the county's appraisals and offers and requested that this letter be provided to the board, and appears that it has been done so.
It has.
The Realty Associates urges the board not to adopt the resolutions of necessity due to significant procedural defects. These significant procedural defects make the county out of compliance with its statutory mandates to exercise its power of eminent domain. Our objection letter details these various defects, but as a high-level overview, the county failed to negotiate in good faith with the Realty Associates, including trying to obtain property rights from the Realty Associates tenant instead of negotiating directly with the property owner. And it's important to note for the record that we did not receive a response from the county to our September 1st letter until the day before the resolution of necessity hearing. We received a phone call instead. And there are significant errors in the county's appraisal reports which resulted in non-code compliant offers to the property owner, including the preparation of two instead of a single appraisal report, ignoring obvious severance damages and use of dissimilar sales. The board cannot adopt its resolution of necessity for these properties now and attempt to fix these significant defects after the fact. That is contrary to the eminent domain law. The Realty Associates requests that the board not adopt the resolution of necessity for these properties, instead direct county staff to obtain a proper appraisal report and make a proper offer based thereon and to negotiate in good faith with the Realty Associates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tomorian. Do we have any other callers?
Public comments, we never had any public comments on the phone.
Well, I said public comments. I mean, people that wanted to weigh in on the -- but so no public comments, no other callers on this item. Before we go to any other questions, I just want to ask counsel, Lisa, there's some issues raised here that are of a legal nature. Obviously, these are serious proceedings. Anytime you do a resolution necessity, it's an eminent domain action, so have we?
Yeah, I would ask either Deputy County Counsel Dion Marine or Keith Floyd to come to address those questions.
Okay, I think it'd be good for the record.
Good afternoon, Keith. Deputy County Counsel Keith Floyd. In response to the points that counsel for the property owner was making, the offer that the county made to the property owner was pursuant to the government code requirements. I think primarily what I'm hearing here is just a difference in opinion as to judgment call, what essentially is a judgment call on part of the appraiser. The county hires an independent appraiser to do an appraisal, which is a preoffer appraisal, which is a prerequisite for the resolution of necessity that's before you today. So as far as this particular instance, there are three parcels, and I think what counsel's alluding to is a decision by the appraiser to appraise the parcels separately, as one of the issues you mentioned, I think is probably the main one. And that is something that an appraiser makes a decision on whether, based on the particular circumstances of the property, whether it makes sense and is proper to consider all of the parcels together, which could affect the value one way or the other, or to value them separately. In this instance, they were valued separately. Doesn't mean that that's what the county is necessarily wedded to. That's the appraisal that was made for the offer, the pre-resolution necessity offer, preeminent domain offer. The county, if the board adopts the resolution of necessity today, will be getting an updated appraisal by a different appraiser following that action as part of filing the action. So we would certainly continue to engage the property owner on that question. In fact, now that it's been brought up and made clear that that's one of the issues or primary issue, we're going to ask the appraiser that provided the initial appraisal to take another look at it and see if that does make a difference on evaluation. But going forward, we will have a different appraisal. And as far as the other issue is comparable sales, that's another judgment call. That is a frequent issue as to whether or not they're appropriate based on the date, similarity of the properties, size. There are a host of factors that go into that.
And so there's no defects as it relates to the ability for this board to consider going ahead today, recognizing, I think, what you put on the record and obviously the communication received, so to go forward with a resolution necessity as recommended. We've met all, you know, complied with the law on that.
For purposes of the government code, to make the offer appraisal, yes. Clearly, there's a difference of opinion as to how appropriate it was or how accurate the appraisal was, but in meeting the standards in terms of the items that have to be done and getting that appraisal in by an independent appraisal, we've done that.
And property owners, I'm sure Mr. Tomorian knows this, but for Ms. Shiong and others, they can actually get an independent appraisal in which we would cover up to $5,000 of that cost, is that correct?
Correct. That's a statutory right that all property owners have. They can get an appraisal on their own, and they're entitled to reimbursement up to $5,000 for that.
Okay. All right. And any other board members, any questions of Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Keith. I appreciate that. So you think that, I mean, I appreciate you addressing the difference of opinion and kind of the methodology or the valuation for purposes of the preeminent domain offer, but do you also agree that the procedural defects that they cite in terms of noticing that that's not going to adversely impact our ability to take this action today as well?
I think we're fine in noticing in terms of the hearing today, that in terms of having contact with the property owner prior to today's hearing, it's certainly the county's practice and it's consistent practice that the county has, makes the initial outreach and then has an extended period of negotiation. Usually, we're talking months rather than a month, but in this instance, despite the initial improper, or I shouldn't say improper, but miscommunication to the tenant rather than the property owner, there's still been a period where the property owner did receive the offer package and is familiar with it, obviously based on the comments today. So we wouldn't, we didn't have the usual negotiation period, but the hearing itself today was properly noticed, which is the county's requirement to make sure that statutory timeline is met, which it has been with 15 days before the hearing.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and I think it's important, and I know the chair brought it out, but I get a lot of inquiries about these when you have so many different properties listed, but I think it's important just to underscore that this is a procedural precursor that's required, but it in no way will impact the county's good faith efforts to negotiate with every one of these property owners to hopefully arrive at a settlement to acquire the properties, and this just preserves our rights for eminent domain in the unlikely event we're not able to do that. Is that correct, Keith?
That is correct.
And what is the, what is the term of the construction easement element of these?
The term is a time period?
Standard, yes.
In this project, it is actually the usual standard for the county. I believe it's three years, and so that is a basically window during which the county could be doing construction on the project. I know it's an issue for a lot of property owners, so the Department of Transportation and the Real Estate Division work with the property owners to, once the project is ready to go and the contractor lined up and there's a schedule, to assure the property owners and give them a more specific timeline. So in this instance, just as an example, you have a three-year temporary construction easement, but the actual construction time on the property could be 30 to 45 days. So it's just a matter of narrowing that down once the county gets a better idea of when things are going to be constructed and what items need to be put on a particular property.
Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate it. I think it's, this complete streets project is a great project. I think it's going to be great for the, for the community, for the businesses, for encouraging more multimodal transportation options. So I appreciate all your work with this, and with that, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve staff recommendation on these resolutions of necessity with the exception of items 5, 6, and 20. Is that correct, Peter?
Second.
Okay, it's moving to second. Just before we call about, when is this project scheduled to be underway next construction season?
Looks like Melissa's approaching.
Hold on.
Hi, Melissa.
Melissa Wright with SAC DOT. We're currently planning to schedule construction, hopefully, summer 2023, fall 2023, depending on how negotiations go for right-of-way acquisitions.
So fundies in place for the project?
Yes.
Okay. Great. That's all right. Thanks, Melissa. Okay, nothing else, then? Go ahead, and we have a motion in a second. Call for the vote.
Unanimous vote. And then if you could, chairperson, call for a motion in a second to drop the 5, 6, and 20 properties.
Okay, yes, that was a separate motion, so we need that.
I'll move to drop 5, 6, and 20 from item 30. Second.
Okay, follow that trail. Okay, no questions? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay, before we go to the afternoon items, we're going to go very quickly to our appointments. I know Flo's going to, is all prepared for those. We'll take this up very quickly, and then we'll go to item 31 and 32 for the afternoon agenda, so.
So item 34, you are continuing to October 25th the Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Veterans Advisory Commission, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to November 8th the Human Services Coordinating Council. And for today, it looks like we have two items, the County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casunas. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, we can continue that where you have pending interviews, so maybe put that over to the 25th of October, please.
Okay. And Pharaohs Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Desmond.
Please continue to October 25th.
Okay, and that concludes that. And before I transition with Lydia, I want to make sure our next presenter for your Cordova Parks Recreation presentation is good to go. She is here. I'm going to get her started. Okay, there she is.
Hi, everybody. Let me make sure the screen just one second.
And let me just go ahead and read that into the record for you. This is the Cordova Recreation and Park District Optimize Plan.
Okay, and just by way of information, I know that there's, the district is doing outreach to a number of different community groups and I think bringing forward their effort to, I think, further gather knowledge behind what's needed in the district as far as program and facilities, and this is part of that. I know we've had quite a bit of discussion earlier in the year regarding fee structure and so forth, so I think this was probably a follow-on to their community effort going forward. So with that, I'll have our guest identify herself and go ahead, and I know there was a brief PowerPoint that was included in our packet, and we'll go ahead and hear from folks.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your time today. My name is Dana Foltz, and I'll be sharing information about the optimized plan for the Cordova and Recreation and Park District. The Cordova Recreation and Park District Optimized Plan Project Team contains both district staff as well as our trusted consultants. From CRPD, Patrick Lark and the General From CRPD, Patrick Larken, the General Manager, Laura Taylor, the Park Planning and Development Manager, and Jill Leons, the Park and Recreation Director, among, and among many other staff members, are supporting this optimized plan. Director Danzel is board member representative to an ad hoc committee for parks, facilities, and recreation optimized plan stakeholder meetings. I'm here representing the project as CRPD's consultant, agent, and associate, and in supporting the optimized plan as a planner. The Cordova Recreation and Park District was established in 1958 and covers almost 75 square miles today. CRPD serves over 128,000 residents in the city of Branch of Cordova and unincorporated areas of Sacramento County. In total, there are over 600 acres of parkland provided by CRPD. Recently, CRPD transitioned to elective election districts, shown in five colors on this map. The 600 acres of parkland provided by the Cordova Recreation and Park District is distributed among 43 parks, a golf course, and six recreation facilities. These quantities will increase as residential development occurs across CRPD. The recreation programs provided across these sites serve all ages and interests. The optimized plan, we're conversing about today, will create a concise, user-friendly, and actionable document to guide CRPD over the next 10 years. The optimized plan looks at the current and future community needs, utilizing robust community engagement, as mentioned, to ensure equitable access to all parks, facilities, programs, services, and recreation opportunities. The purpose of the optimized plan is multifaceted. The plan will be forward-looking and implementable. The optimized plan includes robust engagement beginning in summer of 2022 to reflect the community's desires for their parks and recreation system. The needs assessment evaluates and inventories all current CRPD sites while all looking into the future for the needs of the growing population and level of service. The plan will look at proposed facilities and opportunity sites while being cognizant of capital and maintenance funding. Ultimately, the optimized plan will synchronize with Sacramento County and other land use authority policies, sequel requirements, and climate action mandates. The optimized plan will take approximately 18 months to complete. Beginning this past summer, the plan is currently in round one of community outreach, where we are listening to the community. We have conducted over a dozen stakeholder meetings to date, including a meeting with Sacramento County staff. CRPD counts Sacramento County as a stakeholder in their project as a land authority within CRPD's boundaries. There are hybrid engagement opportunities ongoing in round one, including topic events and an online community survey, which I will discuss in more detail in the following. While we are engaging with the community, we are also working on project tasks to understand the existing conditions, fundings, and level of service. At the end of this year, we will complete round one and transition into round two of outreach, where we will begin visioning and prioritization. We will reengage with the community for input to guide the project paths, including the long-range vision, recreation needs, and funding analysis. Round two is anticipated to extend through the middle of 2023. The third and final round of outreach will occur in the latter half of 2023, consolidating all that we've learned, heard, and created into the optimized plan document. The community engagement for the optimized plan, as mentioned previously, is an incredibly important component of the overall plan and integrals to creating an optimized plan that reflects the community. Information about the project is always available on the CRPD website with a page specifically for the optimized plan. The page is updated regularly with project progress and ways for the community to process it. For round one, we are engaging with the community with a survey and at community events. The online community survey is open now through December 11th. It is available on that project website. We encourage the community to participate and share what they like and what they would like to see in their parks and recreation systems into the future. Additionally, round one includes pop-up booths at three community events across the district this fall. We were at the Rosemont Community Celebration this past Saturday, October 1st, where over 150 people shared what they liked and what they would like to see in their recreation system. We will have a pop-up booth later this month, October 29th, at the Halloween and Hagan Community Event, as well as again on November 27th at the Cordova Community Christmas Tree lighting. We encourage anyone who lives, works, or plays in the Cordova Recreation and Park District parks, recreation facilities, or has participated in any of the recreation programs to share their input this fall during round one engagement. Thank you for your time today to hear information about the Cordova Recreation and Park District optimized plan.
Great. Well, thank you, Dana, for the overview, certainly for working us through the slides. And it sounds like you've already met with county staff. I know that the area that's covered by Cordova Record Park District largely encompassed District Five, District Three, and a bit of District Four, maybe still? I don't know if so, so I think, at any rate, I do think, as you said, anyone who's interested can reach out. And I would just suggest that you keep our staff apprised of this going forward, and obviously, you've tied it back, at least in part, to discussion we had before this board earlier this spring relative to the 2004, 2014, excuse me, study and discussion about appropriate rates for new development. But I do think, again, having a plan that gives you 10 years of outlook with, you know, the background behind is very, very important. So there's no action required in this today, and any other comments that board members would wish to offer now be a time, or certainly it sounds like there's going to be ample time in the months ahead to weigh in on this. So again, thank you to the district, to your general manager, your board, Dana, and for you presenting this today, unless there's anything you wanted from us, I'll go and see if there's any member of the public. Do we have anybody who wish to address this?
And there are none.
Okay, so we have no callers on this. Anything else, Dana, before we conclude?
That was all. I just wanted to let everybody know that this project's ongoing and will be returned to the community now and into the future.
Why don't you, why don't you one more time, just give the website while you're still on the screen there? Give us the, give us the website.
Sorry about that, I was trying to bring it up so people can see it. Yep, the project can be learned more at the CRPD.com/optimizedplan.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your engagement here today, and look forward to seeing, you know, this as it moves forward. All right, just an information item, so nothing further, so with that, then we'll go to our next item. That's a received and filed.
And item number 32 is the American Rescue Act update.
Okay. I see Amanda coming down.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and today I'll be providing an update on the status of the county's use of American Rescue Act Plan, or, excuse me, American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, state and local fiscal recovery funds. As you know, the board has taken several actions related to the county's use of ARPA funds, and today is really an opportunity to take a high-level overview of the funding and project allocations made to date. The information in this presentation and update corresponds roughly with the county's quarterly and annual reporting that was submitted to the U.S. Treasury with some updated information for more recent project approvals. In terms of an overview, today's presentation will include a brief recap of the background on the county's ARPA funds, as well as the vision for how those funds are being used, key accomplishments or actions that the county has taken in putting the funds to use, detail on each of the county's strategic investments and projects approved to date, information on district-directed allocations and how those align with strategic investments, and then next steps, including development of additional projects within the county's largest strategic investment allocation, which is housing and homelessness. I should mention that we also have representatives from departments with ARPA projects available, some here in the audience, others by phone, should questions come up about the status of a particular project. So as you know, the county has received the full $301.4 million ARPA allocation, with the first half received in May of 2021, and the second half received about a year later this past June. Under the rules for the use of this money, funds must be obligated, meaning committed for payment by December 31st, 2024, and fully expended by December 31st, 2026. Under Treasury guidelines, the general eligibility categories for the use of ARPA funds include supporting public health expenditures, addressing negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, replacing lost public sector revenue, providing premium pay for essential workers, and investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. When the board approved the initial ARPA allocations in 2021, it was in support of an overall vision for ARPA allocations to create a foundation for COVID recovery in the county, where those investments support recovery for residents, businesses, and communities. Funding focuses on equity around economic impacts and services to disproportionately impacted communities, and allocations make the best and most effective use of ARPA funds to maximize recovery from the pandemic. Highlighted here are some of the key actions taken since the county's initial receipt of ARPA funds. In June of 2021, a community needs survey of county residents and organizations was conducted to identify the most significant needs to be addressed. And based on the results of that assessment, the board adopted priority issue areas to guide the allocation of ARPA funding in July of 2021. And in September of 2021, the board approved district-directed allocations of $10 million per district across the two phases of ARPA funding. Guided by input from the community departments and the board, in November of 2021, the county executive recommended and the board adopted allocations by strategic investment area, as well as allocations for district-directed allocations, essential worker pay, and administration for the $150 million of Phase One funding. Following those allocations, initial project recommendations for Phase One were approved in January 2022, and then subsequent recommendations have been acted on in the following months. And then following receipt of Phase Two funding in June of 2022, the board approved Phase Two allocation and project recommendations this past July. This table shows a high-level summary of the approved allocations to date across both Phase One and Phase Two, with all of the $301 million of ARPA funding received allocated to an allocation area. In terms of project approvals and allocations, overall, 86 projects have been approved by the board for total project funding of $216 million. The first three rows on the table represent the three strategic investment areas of housing and homelessness, health, and economic response, with the largest overall allocation, $95 million going to the highest priority area of housing and homelessness, and then $32 million each going to the other two strategic investment areas, health and economic response.
Amanda, just pause for me if you could.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just, just, just want to point out that this is, it's not misleading, but it's kind of buried in this, that 95, I'll just use housing and homelessness, 95 million out of the total 301 on this chart isn't entirely accurate because of the way it's broken down. So if you were to take district allocations, for instance, some of which, as Amanda just mentioned, have been invested in that particular funding initiative, that is housing and homelessness, by district, you'd have in excess of, I think, in excess of 100 million, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, so, so thank you for that. And actually, just to address that point, let me go ahead and skip ahead to the table that I think shows what you are addressing, which is right here. So if we look here, this table is showing us the, the approved district project allocations and how they align, and really support the strategic investment areas. So you can see, there's a total of 35 approved projects, approved across all five districts for about $19.4 million. And this indicates that, you know, as Supervisor Serna alluded to, looking at this amount, the, the total here for housing and homelessness of $5.9 million, you know, we would add to what has been approved within the strategic investment area. Similarly, health, $4.3 million, and economic response, about $9.2 million.
I'm glad you skipped ahead to this chart, Amanda, because I want to point out what I think might be an error, or it's just, it hasn't been recorded yet. But for instance, District One, Housing and Homelessness, you have a million here, but I know for a fact that District One partnered with District Five on a homeless investment at Mather to the tune of a million dollars from District One, and did the same with regards to partnering with District Three, as did other districts with District Three. So I know District One has at least 2 million in housing and homelessness. So again, I don't know if it's the timing of when this chart was made, or then perhaps it wasn't caught that some of those investments have been determined already.
So it could be the timing of when this is made. I'm actually going to have Matt Levesque come up here, who can probably address this most specific, more specifically.
Good afternoon, board members. Matt Levesque in the county executive office. Supervisor Serna, to your point, I don't have the list of all the projects that have been approved, I didn't bring that down, but it could be either a project that hasn't been approved at the board level yet, or it could just been an omission on my part.
That's why I qualified it the way I did. So I just, I guess for the benefit of those that might be watching with some interest, I just want to note that, especially just speaking for the district I represent, that I know for a fact that we have at least 2 million in investments for homelessness. And in fact, it covers three different districts, so.
Okay. Yeah, Supervisor Desmond, while you're there.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna, for bringing that up, because this really struck me as well on this chart. And I know District Three as well, we have a lot of things in the pipeline, it's just a little more of a challenge with some of the CBOs, we're trying to work with, to work out some of the details. I think it's important for, for the public to realize that, you know, the economic response, for instance, it was very easy to kind of piggyback on some countywide initiatives. And so that's why those move forward more quickly. But I'm glad Supervisor Serna called this out, and I just kind of want to amplify that a little bit, that housing and homeless, homelessness will, you know, be far and away the biggest priority for the District Three funds, so, but that will be forthcoming, obviously, Matt, as these things move forward.
Yeah, and just, you know, I recall that when I put this together, it just reflects the board-approved projects through September. So if there's anything in the queue, it just won't be reflected on this table.
When it comes to the queue, you're going to be back to us, what, in just about a month with?
We're working on it. They're all in different stages.
District Five, District Five's going to run out of time, Mr. Levesque.
There's a lot of interests from different angles, so.
So that's what I, I understood the date, so anyway, November 8th, right? Is that right?
I'm shooting for the first meeting in November for some District Five, and then a couple additional districts have some projects.
Again, thank you for your help. I know it's not, you know, it sounds just put them on a chart and send them forward, but I know you do a lot of evaluation behind them. For those that have been funded, are we seeing most of the money allocated? I mean, has been allocated, or is it actually getting to the grantees and/or to the projects?
You know, they're all in varying stages. It's a reflection on, you know, the, the, sort of the completion of the project and the preparation of the organizations themselves. Some are moving faster than others, but it's a priority down to the department level.
Do food banks get theirs?
I don't know the status of the food bank grants. I'm not sure if Ethan's available to answer that question.
Is he online? Lydia, is Ethan on the line?
I don't see Ethan Dye online, no, sorry.
We'll get an update for you.
Yeah, again, I just think the need, you know, the relationship to COVID, and certainly the ongoing stressors that are in people's lives, just with economy and so forth, and I know the food banks, again, have been strong partners and all of that, and I appreciate, I know that required additional effort by you and Mr. Dye to, you know, figure out how to best get the dollars to the, to the food banks for the, for the support. Okay. I just wanted to note one thing while you're both there, though, that since you brought this chart up, that's $2.8 million in D5 for your economic response, about, almost 2 million of that went for sanitary sewer for the disadvantaged communities of Franklin and Hood. Is that, is that correct, Matt?
So partially. So the Hood Sewer Project, you have 1.475 million allocated for that out of your Phase One district allocation, and then more recently, we've been in conversations with the sewer district about an additional $650,000, and that will still have to go back to the board for approval, so it isn't reflected in the 2.8 million.
Oh, so it's not there yet, okay, but Franklin, but for the Hood, Hood and Franklin communities, okay. All right. Any other comments on the chart? What you got? Matt doesn't get here too often, so.
He's a busy guy.
Okay, all right, thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming down, yep. Okay, Amanda.
Thanks, Matt. And Matt may have mentioned it, I'm not sure if he did, but Attachment Three to the board letter does list, you know, sort of the- letter does list, you know, sort of the, the project level detail backup. Obviously, 35 projects was too many to list on one slide, but if you have some questions about what is included in these totals and what's not yet reflected, that's where that would be shown. Okay, let me move back to slide, back to Slide 6 now. Let me find my place. So, so next, so after, after kind of going through each of, talking about each of the strategic investments, just sort of in summary level, next I want to turn to look at them in detail level for each of the allocation areas. And we'll start with housing and homelessness, but I wanted to go back to the slide, just, just to again emphasize, you can see here, the largest overall allocation and also the largest overall amount of approved project funding so far, at $40 million. So, so with the largest overall allocation, housing and homelessness is also the strategic investment area where there is still remaining allocation yet to be allocated, and additional projects are actively being developed for recommendation to the board for approval, including additional safe stay communities, as well as creating additional permanent housing opportunities. Once those project, projects are developed, they will continue to come before the board for approval, as with all prior ARPA project approvals. And of course, in addition to new projects, the already approved housing and homelessness projects are currently being implemented. So as you can see here, in the detail of the projects being implemented, within the housing and homelessness strategic investment, a total of 14 projects have been approved, again, representing $40 million in, in approved project funding within that overall allocation amount. This includes several key initiatives to provide both services to those experiencing homelessness, as well as additional housing options, including a landlord engagement and assistance program to connect people to housing, American River Parkway sheltering supports, nursing, water, and sanitation services to encampments, and gap funding for the Mirasol Village Affordable Housing Project. And then recent approvals include the two safe stay communities approved for Floor and Power in Road and East Parkway.
Ms. Chair, Amanda, why, just curious why Project Room Key wasn't included in the housing homeless category?
Are you referring to, there is a, a project home, a roof, sorry?
I think it's in the subsequent slide.
Room Key on the subsequent slide, yes, because it is actually medical services being provided to, to those in Project Room Key.
Thank you.
Good question, though. And actually, I will, with that, we'll move to the next slide.
Are we still providing water to folks on the Parkway?
Yes, so that is, that is one of, one of, so water distribution to homeless encampments you see here, sort of toward the middle of the, the table, yes.
So when, when does that run through? What are we expected to continue?
So I'm not sure if, Emily can address that?
Hi, Emily Howken, Director of Homeless Initiatives. The contract for the water delivery, we just finished the bidding process and have awarded it, and we have the funding for two additional years, so it will continue at least for two more years.
And what about sanitation services?
Same, same with that. We're in the process of doing the bid process, but we have been able to extend the contracts of the existing contractors, so we're sure there's no disruption in service, but the new contractor should take over sometime in the next few months.
So this funding covers the next two years, or a portion of what we've already done, or both?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
The funding was shown here, has this covered what we've done thus far, and then going forward, or will it require supplemental funding?
Right. This, this funding reflects a full two years of operations, because we're sort of starting mid-fiscal year, we may sort of have the ability to stretch over. This does not reflect the funding that was committed during COVID. That was through the Department of Health Services, so this is two full years.
Okay, so you're picking it up from here. Okay, good. Thanks, Emily.
Okay. So moving now to look at the health strategic investment area, a total of 21 projects are approved, representing the entire allocation for this area of $32.4 million across both Phase 1 and Phase 2. This, the table on this slide is showing the Phase 1 project approvals of almost $20 million, including projects that address substance use, primary health services, supports for children and families, and programs to address food insecurity. Phase 2 health projects totaling $12.7 million include additional funding for substance use treatment and clinic services, as well as improvements to the Warren E. Thornton Youth Center. Looking at the third strategic investment area, economic response, there are a total of 10 approved projects, representing the overall $32.4 million allocation across both Phase 1 and Phase 2. Key projects here include the retail food permit fee waiver program, both for 2022 and 2023, and small business and nonprofit, and, small business and nonprofit, and arts and cultural grant programs, as well as $5 million allocated in Phase 2 for a direct community investment program that is currently under development. In addition to the three strategic investment areas, the board also approved premium pay for county essential workers in two installments corresponding with each phase of funding for a total allocation of approximately $23 million. Looking at the revenue replacement category, one of the allowable ARPA expenditure categories is the replacement of lost public sector revenue, which is calculated pursuant to a formula established by Treasury. Under this calculation, the county was able to claim a total of $38.7 million as revenue replacement, which allows this funding to be spent on projects that otherwise would not be eligible for ARPA funding, or would be challenging to complete under ARPA guidelines. The majority of this funding was allocated in Phase 2, including for county road maintenance and improvements to Mather Community Campus. And we already touched on the district allocations, so that brings us then to next steps. In terms of next steps, many of the projects included in this report today are continuing to, to be implemented this fiscal year, and will continue to be implemented in future years. And as I mentioned, additional project recommendations are planned for the housing and homelessness strategic investment, and will be brought forward in the coming months. As projects are implemented and during future reporting cycles, we will be tracking and reporting project-specific outcomes, such as those shown here, that really will help tell the story about the impact of these projects beyond just the dollars spent. I think a good example of this is, is the retail food permit waiver program, which as of July of this year resulted in over 3,000 waivers applied and over $3 million in relief provided to retail food businesses in the county. So it's metrics like that that we will, we will be tracking for these projects. And then, of course, we will continue to provide regular reporting on the status of all projects. This will, you know, this will include the required quarterly expenditure reporting to Treasury and annual reports on spending and outcomes. This information will be shared with the board and also made available publicly, along with other useful information on the county's ARPA website. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to address any additional questions.
Okay. Board members, any, anyone in the queue, any other questions of Amanda or our staff? All right. Seeing none, do we have any public comments? I have no one signed to speak.
And no, there are no public comments.
All right. A lot of good news embedded in all those numbers, so a lot of good work. You know, it might be, again, as you're looking at, and maybe it's hard to calculate, but the persons served, you know, and there, you know, in some cases, you're going to have multiple counting because of, you know, food distribution and so forth, but I think, you know, keeping some track, or, you know, certainly of people that would be housed, folks that, and again, for revenue replacement, you know, if you're a user of the bikeways and roadways and so forth, I mean, that's, that's hard to calculate. But where it makes sense, particularly some of the human services, but maybe even with some of the projects, I think that would be a, you know, a, a good number to maybe keep track of. If it's doable without a lot of extra work, I just, gives you some impact, understanding of the magnitude, I guess, so.
Yes, absolutely. So, so each of the projects, you know, does have sort of defined performance metrics and along the lines of what you just discussed.
Thanks, Amanda. Thanks to you and Matt, to all the folks, so. Anne, you want to make any comments on this? Okay. All right. Board members, no questions, no comments, and this is just a quarterly update. Will we see one more of these before the end of the year, or is this the last one for the calendar year? Okay. Very good. We'll see more projects coming through. Okay. All right. With that, then, we do have, I think, one other item, Item 34 was appointment for own ranks. Is that correct? 33?
Yes, uh-huh, own ranks. And it looks like California State Association of Counties, Board of Directors, and Urban Counties Caucuses, Districts 3 and 4.
Okay. So, any thoughts on this? First is the CSAC.
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Desmond for CSAC.
Second.
Did you accept the nomination before?
Call the questions.
Questions been called, so if any objections, please, please vote. All right. And then I, in the motion, where was the alternate, District 4 Supervisor Frost, was that also included in the motion?
Pardon me?
Because it had, District 4 is the alternate.
I can do it unless someone else would like to do it.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, no, it's great.
Okay. All right, so we'll include that in, in the motion, and that was part of that motion.
Thank you Supervisor Frost.
Okay. For, for SETA, we have expired terms, and these are effective beginning at the calendar year? Because I want to continue to serve, at least till the, I would say you want to revisit sort of the seat that I hold, Supervisor Kennedy, obviously, will continue on.
Yeah, just to assume, keep it the same until?
Yeah, until?
Early next year.
Early next year, when you go back through it. Okay. All right, so I'm fine, so. That a motion? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, move a second to re-point Supervisor Districts 2 and 5 to serve on the SETA Board. Please vote. Need to clear, Lydia.
Unanimous vote.
Recycled unanimous vote.
All right, so unanimous vote on, on both, on both of those, so. All right, that, I think, concludes our agendized items, and we'll go to County Executive Comments. Anne?
No comments, thank you.
Okay. Board members, starting to my left, Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just wanted to give a big shout out to, and thanks to everyone that was involved in a very successful 16th Annual California Capitol Air Show this weekend. I know that a few of us had a chance to attend and speak. I did on Sunday, and I believe Supervisor Natoli, you did on Friday. And Supervisor Frost, you were there on Saturday, correct? Yeah, and certainly want to thank the likes of Darcy Brewer in particular, and, and others that serve on the Board of Directors for the air show. It's apparent to me, at least, that it's come back better than ever following COVID, very well attended, and I was, had good fortune again to ride in a P-51 Mustang yesterday, so, again, thanks for that.
Yeah, I would just echo your comments. I know that County Executive participated in the STEM luncheon, and, you know, the component that's not as widely known, but I think is really, really critical and important element is what they do for youngsters from all over the county to participate in the STEM sessions, and they have a team of folks, and I know, Anne, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, but I think you were there at the luncheon, and, but there's a whole lot of activities throughout the course of a year or two.
Yeah, I was, thank you, wildly impressed. It was my first time at the STEM Expo, and I was lucky enough to greet all of the students and welcome them, and just to see all the young people with their excitement and enthusiasm, you know, listening to all the individuals that are involved in STEM careers, it was really, it was quite something, so.
Yeah, Phil?
Also, if I may.
Sure.
So looking forward to this weekend, and I see Ms. Bellis is here, so she may want to chime in, but we do have, I don't know what annual, I don't know what, is it fifth year, sixth year? We have Aftershock. Yeah, we have Aftershock beginning Thursday, running through Sunday this year, and unfortunately, the Foo Fighters, who were expected to headline the entirety of the music festival, had a death in their band, so they will not be headlining. I believe Muse is the act that is now headlining, but there's got to be a couple dozen acts, if not more, throughout the four days. And then what's also unique about this year is, I believe it's the following weekend, correct? There will be, what's the, what's the branding of it, Liz?
Golden Sky.
Golden Sky, which is going to be a country music festival. So that'll be the first annual. It's also by Danny Weaver presents, the promoter that has worked in great partnership with, especially our Regional Parks Department, and directly with Liz Bellis for years now, so encourage everyone to get outdoors this weekend, enjoy the, the outdoor environment and great music in Discovery Park, and also look forward to the following weekend.
Not going on. Any other announcements? If not, then with that, we'll, in the next couple, next in session, is it the, what's our next meeting? 25th?
October 25th.
Okay, got a little bit of break there, so we'll see everybody back here on October 25th. We're adjourned.